Reporting has started.
Thank you, Amanda. Good evening. I'd like to open the vessel planning zoning commission meeting. Let's start with the project leaders.
Project leaders. By the United States of America. Two of our commissioners have one issue.
Thank you. Uh, first, we will call. Joining us online tonight?
I'm like, Commissioner.
Jeff DeRosa, ultimate.
Mike Kozlowski, vice chair. Paul Stanley, chairman.
Diane Ryan, commissioner.
Okay, the ultimate.
Dave McCullough, land use court.
I think we have some more staff joining us online tonight as well.
Jeremy DeCarli, interim planner.
Amanda Marquinez, reporting secretary.
I'll see Doug Moody for the grant. All right. Just a note about the sign and sheet, something a little new. It's actually been a rule for ever. It's in black and white, right outside the PNC room. We took it upon ourselves to try to bring in some of these lengthy meetings. Our last meeting ended at eleven thirty. And we've had this all along months. So ask anyone that wants to speak, I invite you. If you're here, speak if you want to speak. Please just sign up on the sheet outside. I won't go around the sheet until we call for that public hearing. We ask you your name and address goes on there. Anyone online that wishes to speak, you will call at that time, at the beginning of the public hearing to add your name to the list. Everyone that's on the list will get called. No matter how long it takes, we're going to ask to keep your comments to three minutes, just to give everyone a chance to speak. I'm also going to ask the refrains and kind of applause. It just takes away from our ability to hear what people are saying. We want to make sure everyone has a chance to speak and get their point across. If you have any other longer comments, you're also welcome to send in by writing. The email and those also, and I know some people have already done that for in the past for other stuff. All right. Excellent. That being all said, we are going to move into the continued public hearing. For One Nolwood Drive LLC, eight thirty G site label view. And I am refused from that, so Mike can take over.
Okay, thank you, Paul. I'm going to, before we get going, send Jeff DeRosa for Paul Stanley as we move forward with this public hearing. As I said, One Nolwood Drive is an applicant or someone on behalf of the applicant here to speak on behalf of the application.
I don't see anyone.
Anyone from? Um, is it possible that the applicant thinks that my meeting is at seven? Yeah.
That's a very good yes, I'm going to email the project engineer right now.
Okay, um. If that's the case, I'd like to make a motion to table this till after the uh, public hearing for new public area for vessel, the next item on the agenda, vessel RE holding LLC. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, one, one though, the rest, aye.
We have to start that at seven because.
You can do other stuff on the agenda.
We can do other stuff.
Right. So the, so the way to handle that this round would be, uh, the, the commission could table the application for vessel RE holdings until seven o'clock and then go to the other items as listed on the agenda.
Okay, so, uh, we will push that towards the end of the agenda and then when I re-. So come back in.
So, so, right, so, so that was, that was a motion to table One Nolwood Drive LLC. Now you would need another motion to table vessel RE holdings LLC until your other items.
Okay.
Unless I'm speaking out of turn.
No, no, you're right, David. I think the, the appropriate thing to do would be to, I, I reached out to project engineer for seventy-two reservoir. We'll see if we get a response. Hold off on vessel until seven o'clock because of the legal notice and I think you can move to, your work session might be the most appropriate thing to do next.
Very good.
I have a question. Um, I just want to understand what's going on. Where are some stacks in the reservoir? Is this conversation mean that we are not discussing that application at seventy-two reservoir now?
Not at this moment.
Okay, because when will it be discussed?
Um, when we hear back from our town planner who is in contact right now to see where the project.
Because I had a question on behalf of you. Well, it's two questions.
Okay, we will, we will address those when, when we bring that back up on the agenda. Thank you so much.
We need to make a motion for the, uh. You, you should make a motion to table, uh, vessel RE holdings till later.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, next item on the agenda to table vessel RE holdings LLC till seven PM, what is listed on our public notice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If you. So I'll be moving to our business meeting. First thing, we had the amended minutes. So we're going to choose for review those. Any more to say?
Yes.
I don't want to make a motion to accept the amended minutes.
I make a motion to amend the minutes to ten, twenty-five.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Any extensions?
Yes.
Yes.
I will also state.
Um, just as a point of clarification, who is Mr. DeRosa?
He was only seated to that, uh, for, for, for Paul, for, uh, seventy-two reservoir.
Did he not just second the motion for those minutes?
Oh, okay. Seconded. Are you good?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're asking it. Uh, so, is there something else?
I second it.
You know, we can't hear a thing you guys are saying back here. We can just hear a little bit of mumbling.
I was going to ask the same thing.
Yeah, and air conditioning is very loud.
Excellent. Thank you. All right.
I'm having you in a hard time for you, and I'm in this, you're going to sit down. I deserve an absolute decision.
Thank you. Let's try this again. Has everyone had a chance to review the amended minutes on six, ten, twenty-five? Forget it.
Don't allow them.
You have to, you have to announce it.
We are, we are conditioning it right here.
I've asked for them. Keep what provides to sort clear. We have a, you have a motion?
I make the motion to amend the minutes from June tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extension?
Aye.
Stained.
I'm also an extension. The motion passes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from six, twenty-four, twenty-five? Any questions, comments, concerns?
Love to do approve.
I will. Can he second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Aye.
Who, who did the, uh, who abstained?
Mike Kozlowski.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes. Amanda, is it correct we have no invoices?
Uh, no invoices.
Excellent. Uh, we can move into our work session. Uh, for Eди and Son is Incorporated, eight thirty G site plan, fifty-three Taylor Avenue. Uh, I'm also refused from this application, so Mike can take over. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I might interrupt you, I apologize. I just spoke with the project engineer for seventy-two reservoir and he's going to log in. Um, it's up to you. He's actually requesting to join the hall right now. So if you want to jump back to the seventy-two reservoir public hearing, that would be appropriate. It's up to you.
I think that is an appropriate course of action.
Unbelievable, all right.
For record, if we have to do it again, I will seek Jeff DeRosa, Paul Stanley for number four A on the agenda, One Nolwood Drive LLC, seventy-two Reservoir Road, eight thirty G site plan.
What do we need, the blast is going to come for Taylor, which is going to be later?
No, no, he was going to come for this one.
Mr. Trinkus, uh, I know you just got on, but the floor is yours. Mr. Trinkus, did you hear me?
Yes, I'm, well, hang on a second.
Please, take your time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Sorry about that, didn't, uh, I'm out the other side of the state, didn't realize the meeting was starting a half hour early.
No problem.
So, um. I did ask, uh, I did send the link to the blaster, um, Dave Ambrosia, so hopefully he will be logging on. Um, as far as that goes, um, I did put it, uh, let me start, Steve Trinkes for the record, uh, professional engineer representing, uh, uh, Tony and Mike D'Orio at, um, seventy-two Reservoir, uh, Street. Um, I did put in two calls, uh, to the police department, uh, about finding out about accidents. I actually did not get a call back from, um, uh, from either of them. Um, but I believe one of the public members at the last meeting did talk about, uh, like four accidents in the past two years. But I wasn't able to get any other information, uh, unfortunately. So, you know, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I don't have any other information to, you know, provide. We did provide, you know, basically all the blasting information from, uh, fifty-three Taylor Avenue because the same blaster is going to do it and the same process is going to, you know, occur here. So all of that is, is part of your record.
Now, Mr. Trinkus?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I'll open up to the public for comments, um, and we have that sign and sheet? Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll bring that for you. Thank you.
Do anybody pump up the volume because the scare has, or we can't hear.
Yeah, I, I will do my best to speak as loud as I possibly can. Um, and then, um.
There's one more seat up there.
I will, I will also, if, if, may I offer a point of clarification?
Yes.
So if, if, if you are having difficulty hearing, we also have the general purpose room set up for overflow with two monitors, speakers.
Your voice we can hear. Your voice we can hear when you get there. Usually you just need to protect that.
I have privacy, ma'am, I, I apologize. So, uh, if, if, if you are looking, if, if you are having difficulty hearing, you can always go to the general purpose room. We have monitors and speakers set up there. Um, you can participate in the meeting that way. We will offer the same opportunities for public comment for people that are in that room if you want to offer comment. You can feel free to stay here if you like, but I just wanted to let everyone know that that room is also open if you want to participate or attend that.
There are four seats in the front.
We just turn it off. Yeah, and then turn it back on and that way everybody can hear.
Sure, I'll turn it off.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, I will, uh, I'll call your name and if you, for seventy-two reservoir, if you'd like to please come up since you've signed your name, uh, please do so. And I apologize, uh, Mike, some of the, I have a tough time reading, so I'm going to, resident at seventy-five Reservoir Street. Please step up and state your name.
My name's Diane Cottler, I live at seventy-five Reservoir Street. I have two questions for Mr. Trinkus and then I have two questions for the board.
Please.
Okay, Mr. Trinkus, the first question I have is, um, a question that I asked at the last meeting and it was not answered. I'd like to know why, when you bought the property from Carol Murphy and told her that you were going to build one family house, why you're not building that house now? And the other question is, are you working on a traffic study?
Okay, what is your other questions? So basically, we're going to get all the questions from the public and then, uh, from the commission and then we'll allow the applicant to respond.
Okay, my other two questions for the board are, um, I went online this week and I saw that at some point Beth Kabagna had talked about a four-year moratorium on affordable housing in depth. I'd like to know the status of that and I'd also like to know the status of, I've heard about a retention conference for people down at the end on the, um, east side of Saxon Road. I'd like to know the status of that.
So that will be addressed, I apologize. That's more not related to this particular application, neither of those two questions. We'll answer those during public comments, which is actually at the end. So we have to keep our comments and questions specific to this application.
Okay, the end of what?
The end, so at the end of our agenda, we have, uh, a public input section on our agenda. Unfortunately, that's when we have to address those things. We can't address things that are not related to the application.
Uh, maybe in an hour or two.
We will, I will make sure we address those.
And are those going to be available online?
The, the responses?
I can't stay that long.
No, understood, yes, there will be a recording that you would be able to watch and hear the responses. You're very welcome, thank you. Okay, uh, I apologize. Uh, next we have, uh, I apologize, is it Bart Vogel?
Yeah, I've decided not to sneak it this time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Uh, Paul Wells, seventy-one Chestnut Street?
Yeah, I'm here for the, the building on Nashville Road.
Okay, so I'll make sure we put you on that list. Apologies for that. Uh, ten Nashville Extension?
Oh, yeah.
Robert?
I'm, uh, here about the Nashville.
Nashville, okay.
Oh, Mike?
Yes.
There's two sign and sheets out there and on the top, one says Reservoir Street and one says Nashville.
Understood, they're both, they're all under the Nash, the, uh, reservoir one right now, so I'll.
Okay. I was saying, I know, if they want to, if they want to put their name down on the Nashville sign and sheet, they can.
Understood, uh, thank you. Uh, we have Frank Kara, sixty-seven Brassie Plain.
For Nashville.
Nashville, thank you, Frank. Uh, Scott Murphy, seventy-four Reservoir Street, Mr. Murphy.
How you doing, Scott Murphy, seventy-four Reservoir Street? Um. I want to know from Mr. Frankis, when was that lot split into two building lots? It was a three-quarter acre, one-family zone house. Um. He also kept referring to the house as being a blind spot. The house is not the blind spot. The house will be a partial obstruction to the blind spot, which is the road. Um, I also want to know about his retention system for the water on the property. How much water does he plan on catching in that? Because he's putting hard pack in, taking away the natural absorption of the, the rock and dirt, putting in asphalt and concrete. I can tell you right now, the last storm with those driveways he put in across the street, with the other ones he just built behind, there was a lot of water running out of there. And, and I know down Nash or, um, Nolwood, that's not his problem. But adding to the problem, which ends up in Saxon eventually. So I want to know how much water on this property he plans on catching in his retention system. And I have a problem with him pushing the snow from the front to the back because now it melts, ends up in my driveway. And I don't feel like I skating on my way to work in the morning in my own driveway. And I also, it's not a big issue, but he keeps referring to, Beth Kabagna said this is what's best for here. Beth is retired. Beth doesn't live on that street. Beth doesn't drive on that street. She doesn't know what's going on over there. And him keep repeating that makes the whole thing sound very suspect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Uh, and then we also have Brittany Murphy, seventy-one Reservoir Street.
Hi.
Hi.
Brittany, seventy-one Reservoir Street. I wasn't here last meeting, but my primary concern is going to be and continue to be my son's brain injury with the blasting. He's five, he's had it his whole life. He can't take another brain injury. So that's my primary concern.
Thank you so, so much. Any other, uh, comments from the public if you did not sign in, uh, in regards to seventy-two reservoir? No, anyone online? From the public?
In the instance that there is someone that's attending their first planning and zoning commission and wants to offer public comment, use the raise hand icon in the toolbar at the bottom of the Google Meet app. It looks like the hand. If you click that button, it gives us an icon that lets us know that you want to offer public comment and we will take that at this time.
Next, no one from the public online? Not seeing any raise hands. Um, I'm going to go move to, uh, commission comments. Scotty?
Um, this is another project that's shoved down our throat because the state is allowing it. We have almost no say to make it go away. Unfortunately.
There's no way to stop that new law of the state?
Eight thirty G?
No.
That's not a new law.
Wow.
Eight thirty G's been around a long time.
Eight thirty. One of the newer laws.
Been around for decades.
There's a new one on the table that just recently got denied. So this is still this regular eight thirty G that's been around for decades.
Why are the changes happening so much?
Your, your name and address from the record, sir?
Kevin Sutton, fifty-five Nashville Road.
Answer that, I don't know.
Excuse me, I think. Seventy Wolford Road, I think that there is a way to stop it if there is a safety concern.
Yes, health, health and safety concerns, we have to prove health and safety.
You just don't, you can't. Because you want to stamp everything if there is a safety concern.
We're heading to a general discussion, but yes, Ken, Ken's point is the underlying zone, which usually dictates what happens in where, you know, different parts of the town. Basically, if they're regime come and do whatever they want, we have to prove health and safety concerns to deny an application.
Jeff? Uh, I do have a concern about health and safety. Uh, Mr. Trinkus, you, you provided us site distances from Nolwood looking westerly and, uh, identified that the building is not blocking uh, any, any additional sites. Um, I had a question on how, how is that calculated? I saw in your plan, you have ten feet off on the edge of the road and then you look westerly. I couldn't find anything in our code that stated how far off the edge of the road we're supposed to be. Um, so I, I just have some questions on how that's defined. Uh, I know at the state level, it's fifteen feet off the road. So, uh, if you could just clarify that and how your calculations were determined. Um, if for some reason we, we have to keep things the way they are, I do think, um, the applicant should provide a site easement so nothing gets stored in that area or built, shrubs, fences, snow piles, stuff like that to, uh, impede the, the site distances.
Yeah, I'll concur with Jeff on, on his comments there, uh, with the sidelines. That's my biggest concern with this project. I know that the distances are calculated via speed limit signs, but as we all know, that not everybody always abides by those that's coming down the road. Um, I also think, um, although they're right to put six units here, I still think it's a very dense project. Um, I think it would, you know, behoove the applicant, I know it's late in the game to look at potentially five or even four units here if they must do an application. Um, that's my opinion, uh. I'll leave it to Diane for any other comments.
Um, I think we requested to have the blasting person come here. We didn't get that for the other for fifty-three Taylor and we still both have some, the person here, um, to lay the fears of the neighbors. Um, that's one concern. I think we also all voted to have a, um, the traffic study, have you do a, have a traffic study and we don't see that. Um. I'm also concerned about the distance of that building to the road, which is only thirteen feet or whatever. I think if, if, you know, snow is being thrown, um, and, um, ice, it's going to end up staying there and I, and I believe the work, the steel also was concerned about that. Um, and they're also talking about putting the, um, rocks or whatever else and piling them there. So that's also a site distance issue. And the height of the building, I'm still not really, I don't understand, uh, the two hundred fifty feet. Maybe you could, we could have something showing, you know, the height of the building there and when you're pulling out, I, I just, I, I think they were looking at, at the distance from the driveway of fifty-five feet and they weren't looking at the distance of the height of that building and construction. And the other issue is still, um, we do want to find out about the drainage, um, if it's going to add to the Saxon Road issue.
Doug, uh, my, uh, I have several concerns. My biggest concern again, pointing to safety, is there's been no addressing Ms. Murphy's question, right?
That's right.
Right, the littlest, the littlest resident, right? And we have a suspicion of, of there could be harm. Nobody has proven there won't be harm. Right, I mean, that, that you would think would be, the onus would be to prove there will be no harm. And nobody said anything about it, so I have a really big stick and plan with that. Spro.
So just, not, not to repeat, every, every, uh, point or term here has been raised, but I do want to emphasize too, that the last two meetings, we have asked for the blasting consultant or the blasting company to join the commission meeting to explain exactly how the blasting is going to be done. This is a segue from the concerns of blasting and the, the noise and everything else that will be produced from that. At the last meeting, we were told that there is a possibility that there wouldn't be blasting because of the way the rock layers that it might be able to be taken out through the use of bulldozer. Still, no answer. Next item is at the last meeting, we raised a concern about snow removal from the driveways. We were told that the snow would be moved in between the buildings to the back of the lot. Uh, first of all, that area is grassed. There's just no way that you're going to, and, and I'll leave this out here for anybody who wants to see it. There's no way that you're going to plow or shovel or bucket load the snow on these driveways. And you basically have two corridors in between the buildings in which you take it unless you're taking it out of the street and coming out to track, which creates the problem that one of the neighbors already mentioned, which is due to the slope of the terrain. All that snow will melt and flood his driveway. All the other concerns have been addressed, but those are the ones that I want to highlight. Thank you.
Thank you, Spro. Mr. Legard?
Yeah, my, my base is concerned, I've, I've voiced it before, but with the blasting and, and Scott Murphy's son or grandson, I think that needs to be, make sure that that is taken care of somewhere down the road as a condition of approval or whatever that Tommy Gallagher made aware that there is a problem, there could be a potential problem with that. So that it's taken care of ahead of time.
Thank you, Mr. Legard. Um, at this time, uh, Mr. Trinkus, I'll, I'll, I know you have a bunch of things to answer here. I'll let you, uh, reply to any of the questions from the public and from the commission, please.
Okay, uh, thank you. First off, the blaster will be logging on momentarily, so he will be available to answer your questions, uh, when I'm done. Uh, first off, um, we never said there's only one house here. Um, this property was purchased, it's of two parcels, uh, by TD and Sons. It is in the double R ten zone, which is your duplex zone. So it permits a two-family on each of the lots. Um, I believe the map, uh, that created the two lots was like three or four years ago. It was done by, uh, Doug DeVesta and approved by, uh, your predecessors. It was not that long ago that the lot was, uh, you know, cut into two lots. Basically, you had the front lot, which funded on, uh, reservoir. Basically, you had the front lot, which confronted on Reservoir Street, right near the intersection of Reservoir and Knollwood. Along the property line, they ran an accessway up to the south to get to the top of the hill. And, uh, under the current zoning, you could have put a duplex on each of the parcels, um, as far as that goes. Um, as I stated last time, I did speak to traffic engineer, and, you know, these both Reservoir Street and Knollwood are existing roads. And we, you know, we showed the sightline, which is part of the plan set from, uh, Knollwood looking west. Um, the way it is measured is it's ten foot back, which is actually what DOT is using now. I have a project in Bethlehem, and that's what, uh, they're requiring us. It's from a height three and a half feet above the ground to a site, uh, to a target, as we term it, three and a half feet in the travel lane that you're looking for. You're looking to see, you know, basically the front of the car. Um, that's how the sightline was, uh, determined. We drew the line. We did a profile of the existing and proposed elevations um, from Knollwood looking west, and then from Mr. Murphy's driveway looking east to the westbound lane of Reservoir Street, which is actually away from our particular property. Um, the building is thirteen feet back, uh, from the edge of the road. It does not interfere in any way with the site distance in either location, and that is clearly shown on the, the sightline profiles. Um, regarding, you know, Beth's comments, we went through, I went through many layouts for my client. Uh, we had actually two six-unit buildings, one at the bottom of the hill facing, uh, Reservoir, and another one, uh, we have one driveway coming in for that, and off of that driveway, it's Serpentine up the hill, and we would be leveling the top of the hill for another six-unit building for a total of twelve units. Um, my clients, you know, as a right can do four units here. They simply wanted two more units. This was the plan that had the blessing of your prior planner. Um, I know Beth is, you know, retired, but, you know, uh, it was with her advice to, you know, my client, that this was the plan, you know, you know, that, you know, we should bring in as far as that goes. Um, you know, again, there is not a blind spot out here. And yes, people do drive fast on reservoir. I'd be the first one to say it. I've seen it, you know, firsthand. Um, you know, under the, uh, for Bethel regulations, you know, it's ten times the posted speed limit, which is two hundred and fifty feet. Um, there's not a provision, to my knowledge, of the town using what the DOT will use, which is the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which tends to be, you know, more on state roads, um, than the posted limits. Uh, that was true for one oh five Milwaukee Avenue, where we had to have close to four hundred feet of, uh, site distance, you know, for that project, as far as that goes. Um, you know, the last, you know, on this, you know, the, the comments regarding that. Um, so we're not opposed to putting a, uh, I guess a easement of, you know, no, uh, no disturbance, you know, between the northernmost unit and our property line to make sure it stays as mowed grass and nothing can be placed in there. Um, you know, uh, no rocks were being proposed to be placed there. Uh, the site will be, you know, uh, more or less leveled. Um, there is a slight grade going from the reservoir up to the last unit, and then we have the major rock cut, um, you know, for that. Um, there is area between, uh, all three of the driveways, um, you know, for snow simply be plowed off. Um, and based on, you know, numerous past few years where we have not had much in the way of snow, it would be more than adequate for snow to be there. If we had a year like two thousand thirteen where it snowed more or less every week, um, you know, it can be, uh, you know, my client has, you know, a backhoe, and excess snow can be brought, you know, uh, to the back of your, you know, behind the property line, where it would drain more towards Reservoir Street and not Mr. Murphy's property. Uh, but snow melt also is a very slow process. It is not something that generates a lot of water because it melts from the bottom up. And when it does melt, you know, any snow melt, you know, infiltrates into the soil, um, and very little runs off. Um, it is not uncommon that snow has to be removed from a site. It occurs at the Danbury Mall and most other shopping centers on a regular basis, uh, when we have an excessive, uh, uh, winter. I also want to point out that if this property was developed under the double R ten zoning, there would still be blasting here on both of these parcels, and the blasting up on top would be way more substantial than, uh, what we're proposing here because there is a high ridge in the southern end of the site. So the blasting occurs to do anything on this property. Um, you know, we didn't, you know, Knollwood Road, all of those parcels, uh, because I did surveying there in the seventies, you know, you know, all of them are slab on grade because of the bedrock. You know, the whole area is rock. Um, that's just what it is, um, as far as that goes. Um, you know, again, the sightline meets the requirements under the Bethel regulations. Um, regarding stormwater, uh, the system we designed addresses both water quality and the peak rate control required by Bethel regulations from the one year up through the hundred-year event, which is over eight inches of rain in twenty-four hours. Um, you know, basically from about ten feet from the front of the buildings going to the east, there is a trench drain across each of the three driveways and piping in between, which conveys, uh, that area of runoff to the, uh, stormwater detention system, which is the north end of the site. All of the roof drains from the three units, uh, the three buildings are also connected, uh, to that system. Um, the water quality is addressed in what we call an isolator row, and then there is an outlet control structure that provides a throttling back of the runoff to, uh, let it out slowly over a longer period of time. And that runoff is then directed to the existing catch basin system on Knollwood Drive and fully complies with the Bethel regulations. Um, as I pointed out, I believe in the past, you know, Knollwood Drive and, you know, all the development, it does drain, uh, you know, down towards Reservoir Street, and it ultimately goes to the east of Saxon Woods. You know, there were no requirements for stormwater management on all of those parcels. So we have a stormwater management system that complies. All the other ones did not have to put them in. And, you know, that's, that's happened since Knollwood was developed. I believe most of Knollwood, uh, drains out to Reservoir and goes, you know, down towards Saxon Woods, uh, as far as that goes. Um, so, you know, I think I would let, uh, if Dave Ambrosio is, is on the, the call, um, I would ask him to address, you know, the blasting issue. And again, as I pointed out, um, numerous times, the, um, you know, blasting today is not loaded up and go bang and, you know, move mats ten, fifteen feet in the air. It's small charges set off on microsecond timing, which is all designed to crack the rock in place. And, you know, and then it is simply dug out by an excavator. But blasting will occur, you know, whether this was developed as this proposal or as, you know, two duplex houses under the current zone. So, um, I think, you know, that addresses those comments. I would simply let, uh, Dave, um, you know, answer the other blasting questions you have.
No, Mr. Trinkus?
Uh, yes, that's all I have. Thank you.
May I respond to this?
Uh, we're not responding right now.
Because he didn't answer my question.
About the traffic study?
And Carol Murphy.
He, he, he did, he did, he did reference that that is a family zone and.
That's, he's representing his client. He might not have been privy to what his client was told by Carol Murphy. He's danced around the issue, and I feel that it's been deceptive. So, Randy, want me to say that?
Yeah. I, I, I understand your frustrations. Mr. Trinkus, did you, did you hear that?
Yes, this has been the R double R ten zone since I did work in Knollwood in the late seventies. It's been a two-family zone since then. It has not been a single-family zone, to my knowledge. My client bought the property as double R ten lots.
I'm not disputing that. I'm wondering what happened when Carol Murphy was told there would be one house built there? What happened?
I have no idea who told her that. I never had any conversations with her.
I know. Maybe, maybe you ought to talk to your client and find out what happened. As far as the sightline, I can understand the sightline being, um, possibly correct. Nobody on Reservoir Street goes under thirty-five miles an hour. And if you, if you or your client would like to come and sit in my driveway at seventy-five Reservoir or Scott Murphy's at seventy-four Reservoir, you can see how people do not adhere to the speed limit. And also that when you are putting the debris from your blasting or your digging down by the road, you're not going to be able to adhere to your sightline, uh, book study. There's going to be an interruption in the sightline when the stuff is put down by the road.
Uh, with all due respect, that is not correct. We are not putting any of the rock down by the road. We are maintaining the area for the sightlines. We have never said we're going to put the rock down by the road.
I thought I read that in your.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, may I remind everyone that this is not to be a back and forth between, uh, the public and the applicant. Direct questions and answers are to be directed through you.
Thank you very much. Uh, did anyone have some few questions here for the blaster on the commission? Sroll, please.
So once the man of snow, the, the two corridors between the three buildings are not the same with.
Dave, do you have some questions on blasting?
Oh, blasting, sorry.
Yeah, I did, I know you had some questions before in regards to blasting, and since we have the blasting professional on the line, if anyone from the commission would like to repeat the questions for him, please do so. Sroll, do you have anything?
Well, I, we've never heard from the blast experts, so I think we should hear them first before we pose more questions.
Uh, I'm sorry, your name again is, uh?
Hey, Dave Dambrosio from Dambrosio Blasting.
All right, Mr. Dambrosio, can you please give, can we please, before we have any questions for you, please start with a brief description of how you would approach a project like this? And, uh, all the steps that are involved, from notifying the neighbors to cleaning up after the blasting?
Yes, yeah, sure. So, so, so everything, we're blasting in a town, a populated area. We have careful planning and coordination, execution, ensure the public safety, minimize the property damage, and stay compliant with the local regulations. So the first thing we would do is we'd send out letters notifying the, the neighbors within a two hundred fifty, three hundred foot radius and offering, uh, tell them what's going on and offer them a pre-blast survey. So the pre-blast survey is high resol- high resolution video that they take pictures inside and outside of their house to ensure, to, uh, look at for existing conditions. These are all documented for years, so it's for their protection and our protection. Once those are all completed, there'll be a completion letter sent to the fire marshal's office, who has offered a survey, who refused a survey, and how everything, and all the footnotes about every, a report about every house that was done. From there, we get a permit from the fire marshal's office. Then what we do is we move in, we mobilize in, and we start drilling. When we start drilling, then there'll be a blast day. We'll drill for a couple of days, and then we're going to blast for a day. And when we come in, we set up four seismographs around the perimeter of the closest structures. Those readings go directly to the fire marshal's office. Uh, and, and reports, there's reports on everything we blasted on every day. And then from there, you know, we got mat, everything's matted. Um, everything's planned, pre, we have pre-vibration. We figure out our vibration ahead of time, so we hit the levels by state and local levels. Um, and that's pretty much it for that. And, you know, we, we, we do a lot of blasting in town. We actually blast it in a little more, uh, a higher populated area than this. We did your train station in town. I don't know if you guys remember that. And, you know, we have a good rapport with the fire marshal in town. We set up, we set out fifteen crews every day that drill and blast. So every day, we're drilling and blasting around the state of Connecticut. Okay, so, I mean, there's no, there's all, all the good lots are unfortunately gone. So this is, this is the, this is the proper way and technique to take rock down and take it away efficiently and safely.
I don't know if you heard the comments before, um, either from Mr. Trinkus or if you got on early enough, but there are some concerns from the public, specifically a mother with a young child who has a, a traumatic brain injury and is worried about his, uh, health and well-being. Uh, I was wondering if you could address that at all?
Yeah, so there's blasting in downtown New York City. There's blasting in downtown Greenwich. So we can use every precaution to, you know, make sure that everyone's, you know, everyone's safe. We, we're not going in there and want to make a mess and, and annoy everybody. We go in there, we try, we, we remove the rock efficiently and quietly with, with, and then, then, you know, then we're done. But, um, that's why we set up all the vi- the seismographs around, around the perimeter. They notify, everyone notifies the homeowners before we're going to blast, the day, the day before we're going to blast. So, you know, I hope that would, you know, help everybody out. This is something that we do every day. This, these are laws. The, the reason they put all these into effect was to protect the homeowners and everybody around it, existing, you know, prevent damage around the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, Jeremy, I have a question for you. I know we're, we're coming up on the end of the thirty-day extension. Uh, we've had thir- two thirty-day extensions. Um, what, 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 what's the options here for this particular case?
Um, let me just, I'm going to just quickly look at my notes because I don't remember offhand. You do have, on this one, you received a thirty-day extension back on June twenty-sixth, which would get you out to July twenty-sixth. So if you needed to continue to your next meeting, uh, which is the twenty-second, you could.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I'm going to go through back on the commission real quick and, and just kind of kind of consensus. Close this. Um, I don't know if there's any new testimony that's going to come through, uh, from either side, uh, that will help move the needle one way or the other. Um, and I would like to get just a consensus from the, from the commission here. Um, I'll start here online with Bob. Mr. Leggard?
I would close it.
Ken?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure we can hear anything new. Uh, a lot of our questions have been answered, so, uh, it's just time to stop. Diane?
I still think we should ask the blast testing man, Dave Dambrosio, any other questions we have before we close?
Please, I'm, I'm just saying, because that's where you're at right now.
I would if we get those answered.
Okay. Doug?
I have no reassurance on the health and safety of the.
Figure. Sroll?
I think.
Who knows? Um, I, I'd be in favor of closing it because I don't think we're getting any other further answers from either side. Diane, if you have any further questions, you would like to ask the, um, Mr. Dambrosio, this would be the time to.
Um, I'd like to know whether you meet my site, um, what type of rock it is. Um, and there's, Connecticut DOT has a whole bunch of questions that they have to have answered. And I'm wondering whether you have worked for them and have answered that. There's like a two-page thing of questions, um, that I think that we should be asking as well, um, from the blasting. Um, and the two hundred fifty radius that you're talking about is from where it's being blasted, and we have no idea, I don't know where on the site. I don't know if anyone else does, where exactly that is and whose, who, whose property that will be, um, affecting.
Uh, Mr. Dambrosio, can you answer any of those comments or questions that were just raised?
Yeah, so it's two hundred fifty feet from the property line. So those people, every, anything that touches that property line, or if somebody's two hundred seventy-five feet away, we're going to survey their house. We're not going to bicker over twenty-five feet or we, you know, especially in an area like this, we're going to say, listen, let's survey everyone we have to survey, so we don't have any, you know, take extra precautions, okay? As the DOT, we work for the DOT every day. We work on the Merritt Parkway, we work on I ninety-five, we work around the state. So this, this is, this is, this isn't like working on the Merritt Parkway, I, I ninety-fives. I don't believe you have that much traffic there, um, as ninety-five from Merritt Parkway. So we do have traffic control. The town sets forth our guidelines and our rules, the fire marshal does, of all our rules and regulations that we abide by. We have to get a blast. We have to get a blasting permit from them, and every, so, and every, every day that we come in, we gotta, when we're going to blast, we call the fire marshal. Everything here is on the up and up. No one has anything to hide. All, all the records go right to the fire marshal's office. I think, I think the train station was a little bit busier, populated with people coming in and out from the train than, than this area here. And it was a bigger cut. It was like a thirty-five-foot cut we took down in the train station with houses ten feet off the property line. But, you're okay?
Sure, thank you.
So you.
And that was, that was in downtown, too.
So you did go to this property?
Yes, we blasted up the street there.
No, I'm talking about the property on Nashville.
Yes, and then we, and we blasted up the street there, we blasted. Yeah.
Any other comments from the blaster? Squirrel, please.
So are you blasting Monday through Friday or seven days a week? Are you drilling Monday through Friday or seven days a week? I have other questions as well.
That, I turned in a blasting plan for the committee, and all those hours were in there, Monday through Friday. Blasting hours will be from eight to three. And unless something changed from there, it will be Monday through Friday, opera, operations, drilling and blasting.
We also have the ability to dictate those hours as well.
Before the actual detonation of your caps, do you blow some kind of a siren or some kind of a whistle so the neighbors know that this blast is coming?
So again, you will be notified when you're, when you have the, if you're directly in touch with this property, you're going to be notified by the pre-blast survey company the day before. In the blasting plan that I submitted to the committee, five minutes before, there'll be three blares of the whistle. One minute before, there'll be two blares of the whistle. Then after that minute goes, we'll blast. Once we know everything's all clear, there'll be an all-clear whistle after the blast that we know that we can let people back on site.
Okay, that's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Someone though had mentioned at another meeting that, I think it might have been Diane Kohta, about pieces, when they did the one across the street, pieces of rock going flying where people, kids could have been playing. Is there any, how do you make sure that doesn't happen?
So there's mats, we have mats that go on there. They're about, the mats are fifteen feet wide by thirty feet long. They weigh fifteen thousand pounds each. So nothing really, the mats, the mats hold everything down. If there's something that looks like it's going to roll on the road, they could, the guys will make a little berm down there so we make sure nothing rolls in the road. But, you know, we, we take every precaution. We do this every day. Like I said, we got fifteen crews that go every single day around the state. So you can imagine all the people that we deal with every day, and this in closer proximity, you know? So we take extra precautions wherever we are. But this is my, this is my name on the side of the truck. So it was a family business, it was nineteen-seventy-one. My father started it, and now we're second generation. And, you know, we keep on going, and you could ask anybody in the state of Connecticut about us. Any, any fire marshal in any town, even the fire marshal in your own town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael? Yes. Mr. D'Ambrosio, you have a, a survey that you do for the actual properties that are within the two-hundred-and-fifty feet. And before this, we're genuinely concerned about this child who lives in the area that this could possibly have an adverse effect on. And I mean, the Murphys aren't unreasonable people. I mean, they just want to know what's going on. And they want to know that their child is going to be safe.
Yeah, so we, we want everyone to be safe. So what we could do is we could, you know, like I said, we could call ahead. We hire, the pre-blast survey company is, is third party. We don't do that. We hire that out. So we could call and get a schedule to the Murphys and let them know when we're going to be blasting. Maybe they want to take a ride that day. Maybe they don't want to be around. Or, you know, maybe let's go to their house and have someone sit with them while we're blasting that day. The blasting is, the blasting, the drilling is, you know, takes longer than anything else. But when you start blasting, the blast itself is literally, it's less than twenty seconds.
I mean, what I'm just, what I'm saying is that that child's well-being is worth more than the, you know, a cracked wall or a cracked foundation.
Yeah.
The child is safe.
Yeah, we're going to make sure that child's safe, of course.
We don't normally, but yes, please, go ahead.
Before my son was born, he suffered a stroke, a hemorrhagic stroke. And the whole, sorry, he almost died. The whole bottom of the brain is dead tissue. And he had a brain injury. He potentially killed him. And it doesn't matter the size.
What we need to know is the effects of the noise and the vibration. This kid can't even sit as a five-year-old and watch fire trucks because the lights could put him into a seizure. It's more the noise and the vibrations because he's either across the street, which is within two-hundred-and-fifty feet, or is it my house, which is about twenty-five feet?
Yeah, so we, we've had, we've had this issue before, and the kid would put headphones on. Okay, so he couldn't hear anything. We've had. Yeah, and it's not like, it's not like, it's not like we're going to be in Iraq where they're dropping bombs. This is all controlled blasting. You know, this, this is all controlled blasting. You know, it's, we're not, we're not, we're not dropping, you're not, it's not going to be on top of the ground. This is in the ground where we're blasting. Yeah, we blast around horse farms where horses, horses are, horses are much, they feel the vibration more than anything. So the horses, we take the horses outside, we lead all the horses outside, and we still blast, and everyone's still okay. You know, the loudest thing, the loudest thing for them, to be honest with you, would be the horn. And I'm sure he gets, I'm sure when you're in traffic, if they beep the horn, he probably gets, you know, that probably bothers him.
Thank you, Mr. D'Ambrosio.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, man, we don't typically take public comment. I know, it's, it's a very sensitive subject. I understand that right now.
Vibrations kill ultras in the ground.
Understood. I appreciate your comment. Thank you. All right. Any, any other comments or questions from the commission here?
One more for, for D'Ambrosio. How long do you expect this blasting campaign is? How many days?
How many days? I didn't, I didn't get the total yardage yet and how much. Usually I'll, I'll assess it when we go up there and look at it, but it, it looks like, you know, we get, we get the permit, the permit is issued for a month. So are we blasting every day? No, we're not blasting every day, but are we drilling? We might be drilling for three days, blasting for one day. Drilling for three days, blasting for one day. So in a month's time, if we had a month's worth of work there, maybe we're going to have six or seven blasts throughout the whole month.
Thank you.
Okay. Ryan, commission, I don't, if we're going to get another extension for this, so if we have questions, now's the time to.
Concerned. There are two items still open. But there is no question that you cannot go through and clear the snow in between the buildings. I know how snow melts. I, I've been in the Northeast long enough to know how snow, all of us in the world here know how snow melts. We don't need a lesson on that. You back to the snow, it becomes ice. Now you can't get the bucket loader in the back. And we haven't addressed the concern of Mr. Murphy, which is you're proposing to swap pile the snow that is just going to drain right into his driveway.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Squirrel there. I, I think that goes back to what I was alluding to before. It's just, it's a extremely dense development on a very, very small piece of property. And I, I think at this point, you have to consider sacrificing the size of your development to appease some of these things.
Yeah, Mike, I agree. I, I, for units would be a lot better.
That's my, my point there. I don't think we're going to get any more information. We have a lot of people waiting for our next application. I'm going to make a motion, Squirrel.
There's one other, which is an open item that was noted, which has to do with the deed transfer. Has that been resolved?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
It has not been resolved. We've been back and forth with counsel, Mr. Trinkus. At some point, they're going to have to do some research and maybe a title search to see if that property, where it stands and who owns it.
I was also informed that if we did move forward and decision of approval was rendered to be a condition of approval, that that would have to be clarified or anything would happen if it was approved. All right, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to close. Yes. Mr. Trinkus, please.
Yes, thank you. The title issue, quite honestly, is resolved. I have submitted to Jeremy the record subdivision map of the first phase of Knollwood. The right-of-way was widened out so that the rock cuts along both sides of the road were within the road right-of-way and not as a slope easement, which would be typically done on a residential subdivision. There is actually a note on the map that expressly says that. The western property line of that area is the fence line, which is shown on our plans. So the town owns the right-of-way. Also, a number of years ago, before the DiOrios purchased land on the east side of Knollwood, there was a conveyance of ten feet of land from the town of Bethel to, to the DiOrios predecessor of that ownership. So it's the town of Bethel not. Convey the land. There is absolutely no question that the town owns that land in any shape or form.
Mr. Chairman, just, you know, we'll, we'll work with counsel for this because as Mr. Trinkus mentioned, just the map doesn't convey the deed. The issue is when we accept the roads back in those days, sometimes we're deeds, sometimes we weren't, we're trying to figure it out. It's still in question, and the fact that another piece of property was conveyed doesn't mean that it was owned by the town, or this piece owned by the town. So counsel is still working on that. And as, our position right now is, we do not know who owns the property.
Okay.
Excuse me, one final comment. With all due respect, then every permit the town of Bethel issued to homes on Knollwood Drive is illegal if you did not own title to it because you have to have frontage, every lot in there had to have frontage on the town road to get a permit. Whether the deeds were ever properly conveyed from the developer to the town is quite honestly not my problem, but you guys own it, and if you don't own it, then you've got a much bigger problem because the town issued permits illegally for every home on Knollwood.
Mr. Trinkus, you're confusing ownership of the land with title. The town has the rights to the road by definition because of maintenance. That makes it a town road. But they don't own the title of the bed of the road. They don't have fee title. So there's, there's, that's why counsel is getting involved. So.
That, excuse me, that is not true in this case because the right-of-way is a, is a separate delineated parcel on the record subdivision map. Old roads, which were not created under a subdivision, the fee title of the residents on either side actually go to the center line with the town having a right-of-way to the limits of, you know, stone wall and in that case. But in this case, this parcel is a separate parcel shown on a record filed map. So it is clearly, you know, was meant to be conveyed to the town to have fee title to that. I mean, we, I have no objection to this being a condition of approval, but I will go on the record having done surveying for twelve years and done plenty of title research in town halls. There is no question in my mind, the town owns this, whether you've got a deed for it or not. It's, it's not my issue, but that's a town issue. But the bottom line is, the property lines shown on our site plans are absolutely correct.
Anything else?
Michael, I second your motion.
Well, I make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Go move. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Let Paul come back in. Do you want, we'd like to comment, there's a sign-in sheet out the hallway.
In the hallway?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't see it.
My apologies. Do you have the sign-in sheet right there?
Was the commission happy to trust in taking the recess?
I'll make a motion, take a five-minute recess while we let the air cool off in this room before we get going. All in favor? Pause, please, Amanda.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to come back in the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. All right. Thank you very much. We will move into the public hearing for Vessel RE Holdings LLC, forty-eight fifty Nashville Road, in thirty G site plan for five-story, seventy-five-unit application. Does anyone want to read the public notice?
To appear June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, and July third, twenty-twenty-five. And then, Camry, these times, public notice, the Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on July eighth, twenty-twenty-five, in meeting room D of Municipal Center, One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, at seven PM to hear the following. Vessel RE Holdings LLC, properties located at forty-eight and fifty Nashville Road for an affordable housing development consisting of five-story, seventy-five-unit residential building. Properties can be found in the assessor's records at map thirty-one, block forty-nine, and block forty-nine, and map thirty-one, block forty-nine, and block forty-eight. A link to review the materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landuse@bethel-CT.gov. Parking for hearing is located to the rear of the building. Paul Stanley, chairman.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Before I turn it over to the applicants, remind, has anyone else that wants to make a comment, has not signed up, that wants to sign up? Anyone? Anyone online want to make a public comment? Would like to add you to the list now? No? Anyone online wants to make a public comment? All right. Yes. Yes. We've met Fanny before. All right. See none, we'll turn it over to the applicants.
Starting things off tonight, thanks so much, members of the commission, neighbors, members of the public. My name is Jay Klein. I'm a partner at Carmody Florence and Academy of Planning and Zoning Group here tonight on behalf of the applicant of Vessel RE Holdings. I'll be referring to them as Vessel to try and shorten things up. Before we get started, I've got some copy. David, I'll see if I can provide it via email a couple of days ago.
Excuse me, can I make sure he just speaks loudly possibly again?
We've got a couple of folks here as part of our project team to present this application to you all and answer any questions that you all have or the public have. I will say that in preparing for this evening, we have put a lot of time and thought into our presentation and anticipating questions that could come up. So we will get in front of as many issues as possible and then hear questions from, from you folks and members of the public. First, you'll hear from myself. You'll also hear from Josh Levy, who's the executive, executive vice president of Vessel. We've got our project engineer, Kevin Soli, our lead engineer of Soli Engineering, his colleague, Alex Marlogas in the back. Magulis, I'm sorry, Alex is in the back. We've also got Joe Verstey, our fire consultant professional, who is waiting in the hallways right now, waiting for his turn to come up. I've also got two of my colleagues here this evening, and associate Karina Aradondo, who's sitting in the, in the rear. And then we have one of our summer interns, Aliyah Kerr, who will be in her final year of UConn Law School with us, with us this evening. The project that you're going to see tonight is one that is a result of not just a desire to respond to the. The project that you're going to see tonight is one that is a result of not just a desire to respond to the demand for housing here in Bethel, but it's also the result of a lot of thoughtful planning, a lot of careful design elements to make sure that every facet of this, from architecture, engineering, fire safety, building code compliance, has all been addressed so that this is a project that complies with all health and safety compliance and will help meet the need for housing. I'll be speaking to that issue to kick things off, and then you'll hear from Mr. Levy, who will speak to Vessel generally, give you an introduction because they are unique when it comes to builders here in Connecticut. Then you'll hear from Mr. Soli, who will discuss the site plan itself. Josh will come up again and talk about the building. And then we have Mr. Verstey to talk about fire safety compliance. Be glad to answer any questions you have after Mr. Verstey has completed his, his discussion. Of course, what, what generated Vessel's interest in this community is the need for housing. That's something that is well-known, I think not controversial, that we need more homes in many communities and in Bethel, Bethel included, and particularly homes for renters and folks who maybe have jobs that are considered blue collar, folks who work for municipal or government jobs, nonprofit jobs, nurses in the health field. So that is the type of housing that's really most needed, and it's a need that's recognized by perhaps some of you or your predecessors when you authored your twenty-nineteen Plan of Conservation and Development, recognizing the need for renters and for people who are working at lower, lower incomes. So what we did in advance of this hearing, in advance of putting together our application, is, you know, I don't like people throwing out these numbers about state median income, area median income, salaries without telling me who these people are. So we wanted to take a look at who are the folks who would be in the income bands that would benefit from the type of project that Vessel is looking to build. And that's what this slide that's on your screens right now shows you. Number of folks who are either in the public, public school system, folks who perhaps work in this building, folks who are in the, in the health field, even first-year Bethel teachers and younger teachers in the community. All would benefit from the type of homes that, that Vessel is looking to construct. Not just this, I'd say, this is the data that I really focus on, but there is other data that shows the need for housing in the community. Certainly, the State Department of Housing tracks this data quite regularly. And for the past ten years, Bethel's housing stock that's been recognized as affordable has hovered somewhere in the five percentile range. It's five point three percent as of the last analysis that they conducted. I think ten years ago, it was five point four percent. So it's in that range of, of, of what is available here in Bethel.
So we can't read that. Making it more full screen so we can follow along?
It's not by design. But in any event, we will answer any questions that folks have after we've completed our presentation.
If we're still here. You can't make it bigger.
Yeah, just make it full screen.
Well, we're pulling up a full, yeah, well, while we're dealing with some of the technological issues. And as I mentioned to David at the beginning, we will be uploading a copy of this presentation so folks can look at it at their leisure, whenever they'd like. But these are some of the examples of the folks that would benefit from the type of housing in the community. And we wanted to look at, Karina and I, when we were putting together this application, we wanted to see, well, if you are a first-year teacher and you're looking for a place to rent in Bethel, and you just go on Google and try and find a place, what do you find? So when we filed the application, I think we filed it May twenty-twenty, it was before the meeting of the twenty-seventh. So May or late May, we went on a rental website, searched for rental options in Bethel, Connecticut. There were twenty-three total results that came up, twenty-three options that were generated by that search engine. Earlier today, I conducted a similar search just to see if there was any movement in the past month and a half. There were fourteen results that came up. So certainly not a lot of choices for someone who is looking for a safe, affordable living opportunity. Where Vessel, I think, really comes in over the top to meet that demand is not only building homes that are safe, that are affordable, but really have a degree of sustainability and efficiency that other builders, quite frankly, have lacked historically here in Connecticut. So I think it's that perspective that makes them uniquely situated to help beat Bethel's demands. So with that, Josh, if you want to just kind of give folks a little intro to who Bethel is and Vessel is.
Good evening, members of the community, members of the board. Thank you for.
You're gonna have to stand up. So if you're in the back area, we can hear you. It's fine.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the community. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and to present to you. If I'm not speaking loud enough for your hearing, then I'll try to speak louder. Thank you. My name is Josh Levy. I'm the executive vice president of Vessel. I've been a developer in the multifamily industry for over twenty years, but created Vessel about five years ago because every time we went to develop something in a community, what we saw was that there was a lack of housing for specific demographic of people, mostly known as the missing middle. And so while there's tons of people who create new luxury housing for very wealthy people who can afford any price range that they want, and, you know, lots of housing for heavily subsidized people because there's tax credits and other things available to them, there's a whole group of people that we were talking about before, like teachers, young teachers and young municipal employees who don't earn enough to live in high-quality, safe, attainably priced housing. And we wanted to come up with a solution so that those members of the community could live near where they work and also return home to the communities that they love after going to school or serving in the armed forces or whatever else they do after, after high school. And, you know, Vessel was, you know, part of the answer to that, that issue. And so, you know, Vessel is a designer and a manufacturer of a housing product. And I call it a housing product because there's replicability associated with it, and that's part of the way we're able to produce something that's higher quality at a lower cost and also in shorter timeframe. So a typical building is going to take eighteen to twenty-four months of allowed construction on the site. Our construction periods are going to be much shorter. Our current construction timeline is about nine months, including site work, maybe an extra month or so, given the complexity of this site. Our buildings are all steel, non-combustible type two B construction. They're fully alarmed, they're fully sprinkled, so that they're going to be the safest possible housing as opposed to stick-built housing that is typical for multifamily. They're going to be the most sustainable. So everything we build is, you know, both sustainable and recyclable and uses all high-efficiency systems, a hundred percent electric. It's also, in this particular building, about eighty-eight percent one-bedroom unit. And those one-bedroom units are geared towards young, working professionals. You know, we list them at about five hundred and sixty square feet. Typical listing would probably be about six hundred and forty square feet because people talk different things about square footage. There was some talk about that maybe in the first discussion, you know, outside of wall to inside of corridor as opposed to just usable square footage in a unit, which is what we like to talk about. But our units are all about also being luxury housing. And so we have nine-foot ceilings and cove lighting and floor-to-ceiling windows, stainless steel appliances, washer, dryers, dishwashers, everything standard in our unit. But we also did away with things that are tenant-inconveniences that are also unhealthy, that decrease the productivity of a typical housing. So our homes, all of us live in, you know, a home that has drywall in it. If you've ever had a leak in your home, you know that that ruins your drywall in addition to your floors and probably your belongings. A vessel building actually has no drywall or paint in it. We have an interior panel system that is made out of a sustainable, hypoallergenic, antimicrobial product. So people are living in the safest, cleanest environments possible. We have leak detection throughout the building, so there can never be leaks in the units or in the building as a whole. We have custom smart home technology that's built into the systems that we created for both safety. We have hearing and visual prompts for people who are hearing visually impaired. We have usability associated with the use of your unit for electric and water that gives feedback so that you use less energy and less resources based on your likes and dislikes, so you can save money while you're operating your unit and spend that money at the local coffee shop or, you know, at a local restaurant or wherever else you like to go. And all sorts of other innovations associated with the property. Everything in the unit is built around, you know, usability, ergonomics, you know, so that it's, and also universal accessibility. So the whole, every bit unit in the building is built so that it can be used for people of varying abilities, whether you have a disability or, you know, or, or you're just different height. So the example I always give is that I'm six feet two, my wife is five feet two. We both have the exact same height for countertops. In a vessel building, you can change the height of your countertops based on, you know, the, the specific user of the unit so that it can be comfortable for you. We have that applied to all, all aspects of our, of our unit. In addition to, you know, luxury level things like rain showers and dual-zone HVAC that's controlled for the individual units and everything else you might imagine. One of the things we think a lot about is building sustainability. So one of the things I mentioned before is that we're built out of all steel. We're also built out of panels. And so the, we don't frame anything on site. The panels are constructed in our factory. They're shipped, packed on a truck to the site. They get erected on the site. The erection of the building takes three to four weeks, at which point the, the, the crane leaves and, and we're just doing finishing work on the site. There's no cutting on the site. Everything is milled materials, all custom for the property as a whole. So you don't have anything like cutting of wood or hammering or anything else like that on the property during that. But from a sustainability perspective, we do things like all LED lighting, high-efficiency VRF systems, envelope continuity. We use all native plants, active energy management systems and much, much more in order to make sure we have the most sustainable building possible. This is an example of how a vessel building is delivered. It gets delivered on a series of trucks. Those trucks are only operating during business hours. Typically, they come between the hours of ten and two. And, you know, max usually is two trucks per day. And, and can be produced, you know, much faster because of that. Often I get questions of like, well, wait a second, but who really lives in one of these units? They sound a little bit small. They sound, you know, different than what we're used to. They sound a little bit space-age. So, you know, I had asked one of our residents, who's a lovely young lady, to give you a sense of who's living here. Her name is Lillian.
And this is my first time living alone. First time having an apartment. I did choose this apartment, yes, because of the view, the lights, the speakers, the space is just gorgeous, super cute. I've been absolutely loving it. I have a family of eight. That's some of the reason why I chose to live on my own. I have felt so welcomed here. Everyone has been so kind.
Lillian, Lillian lives in, on the fifth floor of one of our buildings. She, she is a part of a family of eight. She grew up and brought in Connecticut. And, you know, is a photographer, and this was her first home on her own. Moving to the property, to give you a sense of what we're talking about. So the property itself is about four point three nine acres. As you know, there's, part of the property is that grade on Nashville Road, but the bulk of the property is behind the single-family home that's there today, delineated by this star and is in a wooded area that's raised many, many feet above street level, behind a dense thick of trees. We've got access to public water and sewer. And we're nearby many, many other multifamily projects. To give you a sense of what's surrounding the building, these are existing multifamily properties. This red is the, red star is the property itself and the commercial center in, in town. So, you know, the thing that we often, you know, hear from communities is, yeah, but what will this look like, you know, when you take down the building? We, you know, acknowledge, of course, that our building is quite modernist in nature and that, you know, we're in Connecticut, which is traditional New England architecture, which, you know, is beautiful. And so part of the way we, we choose our sites and also think about site design is, you know, minimizing the impact of, you know, differences in our architecture versus, you know, local architecture. As you can see, the view from the street is going to be only of the driveway and any trees that, you know, are put in place. As you move to a view from Vessel, from the Nashville and Chestnut intersection, where you can see here is a, an outline, a red outline and a rectangle. That rectangle signifies where the building is. Based on where the building is, it's behind many, many trees going back many, many distances, and so you don't see it from this location at all. We also looked at it from the perspective of Chestnut Hill Village behind us. You can see that you see about five percent of the building coming from existing foliage that's there today.
You have a picture of that in the wintertime? Yeah. I apologize. I should not have done that.
Please. Thank you.
Okay, I'll turn this back over to Kevin to talk about civil engineering and landscape architecture.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the director, my name is Kevin Soli. I'm a licensed professional engineer in state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering. Offices located at five-one Main Street in Monroe. I also, I also have a certification as a certified erosion and control, certified professional erosion and sediment control is administered by EnviroCert International. Also actually have a professional traffic operations engineer certification as well. So we're going to talk about the proposed site. And as Josh indicated, the site is comprised of two parcels totaling four point three nine acres. Site topography certainly has its challenges. And I'm going to go through that a little bit as I get to the grading and drainage plan, but we have been able to design the site in accordance with applicable safety standards in accordance with not only the Bethel regulations, but also those established as part of eight thirty G state statute. Next slide. So what we're proposing is a five-story building with seventy-five units. We have eighty-eight parking spaces, four of which are handicap accessible units. As part of our site planning process, we did identify a couple of snow storage areas to accommodate for snow removal during the winter. We have a dumpster enclosure right located to the rear of the building, so just to the south of the building in that top left corner of the parking lot in that location there. We also have a loading area adjacent to that southern end of the building as well. Of the overall four point three nine acre site, our current limited disturbance is approximately two point three five acres. So we've actually been able to maintain a significant amount of existing vegetation and tree cover, primarily to the north and then just into the south and to the east slightly. We, now, I will say that we have received very recently some additional comments from the town's third-party reviewing engineer and also the public works. We will be providing a formal response to those comments. And I'll touch on some of those as we, as I go through the presentation. One comment in particular, our current application or plans in front of you had a raised median along the driveway extending from Nashville Road up to the site. And there were, there were some comments to actually remove that, so that will be removed as part of our revised material that we will be submitting. After this meeting, we want to hear additional feedback from the public, but also from this commission as well. And that'll all be incorporated into what our revised submission includes. Next, next slide.
So Kevin mentioned the seventy-five total homes that'll be being built on the site. As you mentioned, the legal notice, this is a project that is being built under section eight thirty G of the Connecticut general statutes. That means that a certain number of the homes have to be designated as affordable for the folks that we were talking about at the initial point in the presentation, teachers, nurses, employees, things of that nature. Twenty-three of the homes will be what's called restricted to affordable or workforce housing, as other folks may refer to them as. Of that twenty-three total, twelve will be restricted to folks making no more than sixty percent, six, zero, percent of median income. And the remaining eleven will be deemed restricted to folks making no more than eighty percent, eight, zero, percent of median income. I think what's something that, and I know everyone has an opinion about eight thirty G, and that's, that's not what this is about. But I think something that many folks do not know, some of you folks might know, that some in the room might not, is that, you know, there are, for communities that build enough affordable housing, those communities can earn or obtain moratoriums from section eight thirty G from the Department of Housing. Those moratoriums are awarded by two communities that accrue enough housing unit equivalency points or HUE points, as they're called and referred to here on this chart. When you're building an eight, a project under eight thirty, well, let me backtrack a bit. For a project that is not built under eight thirty G, the only units that are awarded these HUE points are the affordable units. So if this project were not being built under eight thirty G, if there was some tool in your zoning regulations that otherwise allow, let's say, this same unit mix, you'd only get points for the twenty-three affordable apartments. However, under 830G, you get more points towards a moratorium for the market rate apartments that are being built as well. That's an additional 13 points as a result of this specific project. So here you see that in approving this project, the town would not only be providing homes that are needed, but would also be earning a significant amount of HUE points or housing unit equivalency points to a moratorium in the future upwards of, what we're looking at is 53 and a half points upon completion of the project.
So this is just again, it's the the black and white version of the site plan, which is included in the commission's packet. As part of our engineering report and submission, we did provide a turning movement template that identified fire truck turning figures. We wanted to ensure that the site was designed to accommodate your largest emergency vehicles. So this was provided as part of that. And again, there are actually some comments that we received today regarding, again, the the access through the median. Again, that median is going to be removed. So our figure demonstrates that there's more than adequate circulation on site to accommodate any and all emergency vehicles which may ever have the need to visit the property. And actually, with this, I'm going to actually invite Joe Verstee, our fire professional expert, to kind of come up in this space based on some of the work that he's done in support of the project as well. And then I'll be back up to talk about the rest of the site.
Good evening. My name is Joe Verstee. I'm an independent code building and fire safety code consultant. Been retained by the applicant and it's matter. You have my May 18 memo that addresses my findings on my review of this project as well as my resume. For the audience who doesn't have my resume. I'm a certified building official, licensed fire marshal in the state of Connecticut. Been doing this for over 40 years, which they fire marshals have been for the last 29 years, independent on my own after retirement. I serve on a number of committees for the International Code Council, National Fire Protection Association. I've caught building construction, fire safety for the National Fire Protection Association as a contract instructor for over 25 years, both domestically and on an international basis. More and more middle equal countries are adopting US standards. So there was an effort to do that training and consulting over there as partners. I'm also an adjunct instructor for the state of Connecticut Office of Education and Data Manager. They're the organizations that provides training for licensed architects and building officials and fire marshals towards their continuing education credits. That said, I've reviewed the architectural site plans, the floor plans, the elevations, and determined that the building height, the type of construction, its footprint, its interior layout, the fire protection systems, its location on the property, as well as the fire department vehicle access into the site and maneuverability throughout the site is compliant with the code. As Mr. Solely explained, they get the turning templates, the truck bill data from the fire department, and that information is plugged in and it makes sure that the truck is able to get into the site. Very specific requirements to the fire safety code for width of the road, sufficient support of the road so the truck doesn't fall in. Requirements, and that's what Mr. Solely does, to make sure that the turning templates provided by the truck manufacturer are satisfied by the curb so that we don't run up on things, don't bang into things, that the slope of any driveways are within parameters by the truck manufacturer. And we have to be able to get a fire truck within 50 feet of an exterior door. Here, we provide access on three points of the building, which is a unique site. The other concern is once you drive in so far over 150 feet, the code says you have to provide a turnaround so that we don't back up in a reasonable distance. Here, there's no backup. The truck can continue on, make the loop on the right hand side through the parking lot as you see, satisfying the truck turning templates provided by the manufacturer, and again, leave the site. So this site is totally compliant with fire department vehicle access. Now, this is preliminary. What ensures that the building meets all Connecticut regulations? For those of you that may not know, once this project is approved, then the documents called construction documents are developed by the architect. So we go from four or five sheets to probably 500 sheets. And it specifies what type of toilet, what type of doorknob. Anything that's in this building is going to be on those documents. Those are required by state statute to be reviewed by your building official and your fire marshal for compliance with the building and fire safety. If they're determined that compliance has not been met, you don't get a building permit to build it. Once items are identified as noncompliant or they require client verification and the answers come back, then they get a building permit. And then inspections are done by the building code. A very specific stage inspection for different items within the code. And as they're inspected, they're signed off on, and the building gets a complete inspection before it's issued a certificate of occupancy. So there are so many checks and balances for the development of documents, the review of the documents, the approval process, the inspection process, the final inspection process, the issue with certificate of occupancy. It's hard to go wrong. And then there are follow up inspections, yearly compliance inspections required by statute that the fire marshal must conduct those. There are also quarterly systems tests on sprinkler systems and fire alarms to ensure that these systems are operating as five, 10 years down the road as if they were day one. There was a bad habit of putting systems in, requiring them, put them in, make sure they work and then don't look at it for 20 years and when you needed them, they didn't work. That's all been fixed by regulation. There are quarterly inspections on these things. For the systems to continue to work. There are door inspections that are required to be done. Many times the fire doors. Somebody is qualified to the fire marshal standard, has to go out and look at every door. It's an 18 point checklist on just a door. So it's an extremely regulated process. But I have any questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you.
Next slide, please, Josh. So up on the screen now is our proposed gradient drainage plan. Our site has been designed in accordance with the 2024 stormwater quality manual. So our site has been designed to ensure that all the stormwater is collected, treated through catch basins and put it with with sumps and then routed to stormwater quality units prior to being discharged into an underground detention system, which allows for retention of the water. And we've been able to ensure that we are reducing the rates of runoff for all points of discharge across the property. We're all storm events analyzed up to and including the 100 year storm event. So we are reducing rates of runoff from the site from what exists under the current conditions. As I indicated before, the site's accessed via a single driveway off of Nashville Road. And there is some considerable gray change across the property. The elevation in Nashville Road is about elevation 448. Our proposed finished floor is approximately 488. So our driveway does serve as a long kind of ramp up to get towards the property. What that allows us to do is to kind of situate this up on a hill where it will be, you know, we're able to maintain a significant amount of vegetation, both the south and the north, to ensure that we do minimize any visual disturbance from the from the proposed building. And again, we've also been able to design the site to really minimize that overall limit of disturbance so that we're able to maintain some pretty extensive vegetation on either side of the building to the north and south. One of the things that I know this commission is obviously where because there is such a deep considerable gray change across the property and along driveway, we are going to have some earthwork required to accommodate the project. And basically, the eastern side of the property on the, so on this to the top of the page, there will be a cut where we're we're removing material. That'll likely be a stabilized rock face with potentially a smaller canyon wall on top to hold back the overburden. And then we are having a series of fill walls to the western side of the property who essentially hold up that driveway and then continue as you come up to the parking lot. We've made sure to include provisions for slope stabilization for any of the areas that we are grading as part of the project. In addition to our submitted materials, we also provided a very detailed blasting plan by a firm out of Plansville, Connecticut, who's worked with not only our contractor, but our client in the past. And it is a very detailed blasting plan, you know, regarding the calculations for the pre-blast surveys and everything else. We did receive some comments regarding the specific rock that is in this area. It's in terms about concerns about acid rock. And the applicant has indicated that in accordance with deep recommendations, there I believe there's three properties within a vicinity that may be burning on wells. And to protect against that, the applicant has agreed to connect those homes to available public water in those streets to eliminate any concern regarding, you know, the the process of of earth removal, rock removal that comes along with that naturally occurring rock formation. Next slide, please. So this actually just kind of goes into more a little bit more about our stormwater treatment train. So again, all the stormwater is collected through a series of catch basins. All of those catch basins have deep sumps, which allows for initial pretreatment to allow for any kind of settlements to settle out before it goes into the pipe network. They're then routed through a hydrodynamic separator, which complies with the treatment methodologies prescribed in the water quality manual that removes other additional suspended solid prior to being discharged into an underground detention system, which again, provides stormwater retention to ensure that the water will be discharged at a rate slower than how that water leaves the property under current conditions. And we have those not only on the upper parking lot, but also along the driveway as well to ensure that any and all stormwater is collected, treated, and controlled in the rate of runoff as it leaves the property. Next slide. We provided a very comprehensive solar erosion sediment control plan. And we've actually broken that down into phases. So the initial phase identified on the screen here basically calls out what's going to be done as part of the initial demolition of the first house on the property where our proposed driveway will be constructed. Next slide. We've then provided an overall map which shows the initial tree clearing, initial grading exercises. We've identified sedimentation basins throughout the property to ensure that any and all water can be collected and treated in accordance with the solar sediment control manual as provided by D E P. And we've already made some minor tweaks to that regarding the use of straw, straw, excuse me, straw bales and, you know, silt nets and other measures to ensure that there will not be any sediment laden water leaving the property and all be collected and treated on site to ensure that there will not be any runoff into Nashville Road. Next slide. And then this is just the the plan for phase three, which actually takes into consideration what will take place on the site during building and site construction. It's more detailed. Next slide. Included in the plan set is a utility plan. We are proposing all underground utilities from Nashville Road. As as was indicated, the site is serviced by public water and sewer. We also have electric running underground up the driveway and speeding the property. Next slide. We do have a landscape plan included in our submission. It is, as Mr. Levy indicated, it is it is designed with all native species. So we do have over 78 different grass covers and shrubs in addition to red maple trees throughout the parking lot and along the entrance corridor really kind of create a nice environment and aesthetic for not only the people visiting the facility, but also residents as well. Next slide. And this is just kind of an image of some of the planting pallets with switch glass, switch grass, excuse me, twilight zone, blue stems, some prairie drop seeds and the red maple trees that we're proposing throughout the site as well. Our lighter plan has been designed to be dark sky compliant, which means that all fixtures are recessed so that there's no visible glare on the property. And it has been designed in accordance with, you know, all appropriate lighting standards to provide a safe environment throughout the parking lot and at all the entrance points along the driveway and toward up towards the building as well. Next slide. And then another concern for every application is traffic. Now, I will say that, so we did provide a comprehensive traffic impact study. As part of that analysis, we did install automatic traffic reporters on Nashville Road in May of this year to make sure that we were actually not only just looking at site distance based on the posted speed, but also doing it in accordance with the O P requirements to establishing what the 85th percentile speed is on Nashville Road. And we included a site distance calculation and site distance figure, which is up on the screen here, which shows that we have more than adequate, exceed the minimum site distance required for the actual travel speed on the road, not just what's posted. And we've been able to provide that in our in our reports. Next slide. Now, from a trip generation standpoint, so as traffic engineers, we need to understand how the roadway network operates today. And we need to understand what our proposed development may do from a trip generation and potential impact standpoint. Now, we have a number of tools to be used. The Institute of Transportation Engineers creates a trip generation manual, which is used to establish trip generation rates for specific types of housing applications and really any application. And these this empirical data is used based on both, you know, local, regional, national studies so that we can ensure that what we're proposing and what are, you know, what any potential impacts we're able to identify and mitigate as needed. For a project like this with 75 units, it does not generate a lot of traffic. And we want to look at a number of peak hours. So we look at, please, we look at, we look at trip generation for both the AM peak hour, the afternoon weekday peak hour, and then the Saturday midday peak hour. So in accordance with the I T E trip generation manual for this type of this type of project, in a weekday AM peak hour, that's the peak hour of traffic between 6:00 AM and we look at like a four hour window between 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM. This development for that peak hour of traffic is only anticipated to generate 28 total trips. So six entering, 22 exiting for 28 total. During that weekday PM peak hour, which we look at a period between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, traditional rush hour traffic along Nashville Road. If there is any, which Nashville Road is a generally low travel volume roadway. For the afternoon peaks here.
Everyone, please.
For the afternoon peak period, trip generation would be 18 trips entering the facility, 11 trips exiting the facility for 29 trips during that peak hour. We also want to look at that Saturday midday peak period. And during Saturday midday, really right around lunchtime or so, we look at a period between 10:00 and 2:00, do counts, determine what that peak hour is and then apply these trips to that, through those volumes, it would be 15 trips entering, 14 trips leaving the facility for 29 trips. So when you really look at this and you think about what these 28, 29 and 29 trips are for those peak hours, that's one car every two minutes. And when you look at a roadway like Nashville and our driveway, there is not any significant impact. The roadway will continue to operate acceptable levels of service and our driver will operate at acceptable levels of service with a level of service B for all of our exiting movements during all the periods analyzed. Next slide. So again, just to summarize those conclusions, the site driveway on Nashville Road will operate at a level of service B during all peak hours. Their acceptable site distances, the site driveway on Nashville Road looking both right and left. We exceed that what's required in accordance with the 85th percentile speed data. Emergency vehicles can safely traverse the site. And the proposed development does not create any health or safety issues with respect to traffic, ingress, egress, parking or onsite circulation. And I think with that, I'm going to hand it back to Josh to talk about the building architecture.
These floor plans are included as part of our application, but just as an opportunity to go over them. What you see in the floor plans are the typical first floor plan, which shows the one bedroom units in pink and the two bedroom unit in green. What you have here is your, what we call your entry corridor, your your entryway, which is a controlled access entry area, elevator and your mechanical room. This goes into your typical floor plan for the floors, you know, starting at floor two and above, where you'll see that you have a two bedroom line here and the same two bedroom line here. And the remainder being one bedroom units all around the double sided corridor. You have two means of ingress and egress, stair at the at the front of the building into your into your elevator bank and then a rear staircase over here. And these were just the typical immediate floor plans for the two bedroom units and the one bedroom here.
Before praying over, I know you folks have questions. I know the folks, our neighbors have questions too. I just wanted to come back to, you know, how this fits in with Bethel's plan and need about that. You know, when I'm starting out on a project, whether it's with Josh or another client, one document that is important to me and looking at is the plan of installation development document I referenced earlier on in the presentation. I think it's important to note that this project complies with or helps meet several goals within the plan of house operation at the moment. I just I think a couple are important to just read directly from the plan. The first is the need to provide quality and this is the quote quality and affordable housing for Bethel's workforce. We talked about that earlier this evening. The P O C also encourages promoting, again, direct quote, energy efficiency in new housing as a means for reducing overall housing utility costs. Josh spoke to you about the significant sustainability and the efficiency enhancement. It's at a present in a vessel. and the efficiency enhancement. It's at a present in a vessel building, might not be present in another type of multifamily, multifamily product. Another section of the plan, so calls for explicitly expanding housing opportunities and design choices to accommodate a variety of housing types and needs. When we talk about, you know, providing different types of homes, affordability is a component of it. But another part is that providing different types of homes. You want to have single family homes in towns housing portfolio. You want to have multifamily. You want to have what I would consider vessel, kind of more streamlined, simplistic, multifamily opportunity that doesn't have a bunch of amenities that quite frankly, if people lived in a, an apartment building that's been built in the past ten or fifteen years, a lot of the amenities don't get used, but tenants end up paying for them in their rent anyway. So vessel is really trying to cut out, cut that out to deliver a more, more affordable product. And another important factor from the P O C D, P O C D, excuse me, is that this property is designated as a residential village density comfort, meaning it's an area intended to contain the most diverse housing options in towns, higher densities than other, other areas of town, and a development priority over the next decade. That was the P O C D back in twenty nineteen here, we're coming close to that decade, but meeting that facet of the plan of conservation. So we're happy to answer questions that, that you folks have. Our team is here. So listen.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. I would like to remind everyone, if you'd like to talk, like to speak, remind, and everyone had a chance to sign up that wants to speak. Anyone didn't sign up that wants to speak? You didn't sign up. Let's do that now. This will be my last call. Name and address, please. Is there anyone online that would like to add public comment? If so, raise your hand. And all I do is listen. David, have we seen anyone?
I'm seeing Susan Miller with her hat raised, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, did you hear me call up Susan Miller?
Yes, we got her ringed up.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Before we move on, I'd like to suggest a five minute quick recess, bathroom break, turn the A C on, crank it up for a few minutes. And then we'll get into the public comments. All right. So I'll make a motion to take a five minute recess.
Second.
All favor. All right.
It has started.
Make a motion to resume the meeting.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay. All right. So I'm going to go into the public comment. Just as a reminder, try to keep your comments to three minutes. Direct your comments to the board, not the applicant, please. All comments run through the board. Please refrain from applause. It just takes away from that person's time, takes away from our hearing of them. I know there's been some complaints about us hearing each other tonight anyways. So let's just move right into that. I have Thomas Cronin and I apologize if I.
That's right.
Did I get it?
Yeah.
And just come right up to the front, please.
Also, everyone's going to get a chance to speak. The commission's going to speak and then the applicant will then respond to any questions.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, ninety three Chestnut Street apartment seat. All right, Thomas, you have the floor.
Hi, like I said, my name's Thomas Cronin. I'm here on behalf of myself and my family as well as I am the president of the H O A for the Chestnut Hill Village. So I'm here representing that community. For those who aren't aware, we have shared a direct border with the proposed property. And we have a significant number of concerns, although it's been brought to my attention that the only relevant concerns for this project are going to be health and safety related. That being said, I want to point out that the image that they produced in their slideshow shown tonight of our property was not accurate. It was very clearly a synthetic image. I know that that's not what it looks like because I live there, see this every day. And I think the fact that they would resort to that rather than going and taking a picture and using an authentic image suggests that there is reason to have more scrutiny of their application in general. One of the big things they cited for, one of my biggest concerns and our biggest concern is the traffic contribution along Nashville, specifically an area that they seem to have intentionally excluded, which is only a thousand feet away from the proposed property entrance, which is the extended intersection, including Nashville, South Street, Chestnut Street and Greenwood Ave. Very abundantly clear to everyone who travels that road on a very regular basis that it is not suited to handle the traffic that is already existing. Even when there is no traffic on that road, the sightlines are very difficult to navigate and there are many issues. It falls though very close to the fire department, about a quarter mile down the road on South Street. I've spoken with many people who have already seen that fire engines and ambulance have had a difficult time exiting that. I've seen that myself. They said that they only anticipate about thirty three cars during P V traffic hours, which would indicate that about a little less than half of the traffic, of the parking spots that they have allotted will be driving. Although they indicated that the expected resident of these units would be a middle class working person. Who, I believe they specifically use people who go to jobs and blue collar workers who I believe need to travel to their job sites. I believe the parking allotted meets the legal fair requirement based on state statute eight dash two D nine, which requires eighty three minimum parking spots. They propose eighty eight, technically over that limit. However, their engineer calculations provided on drawing two point eleven indicate an appropriate number would be a hundred and sixty nine based on actual living standards. They have appropriated approximately one spot per bedroom. Although they indicate that they expect each one bedroom unit to have about one and a half residents, which would require more spots. They also fail to include spots for visitors, contractors, or anyone else who might incidentally be on the site as well as, I believe, eight of the spots provision are intended, are designated as intended for use by electrical vehicles eventually. So I think, you know, our concern as a neighborhood is we've already had many major issues with people parking and coming into our area unauthorized. There's no street parking. There is no municipal lots. There is no walking considerations for this lot. They included this information in their documents. Everything that I'm referencing is directly referenced to their documents. And I think on top of that, just to kind of summarize, you know, they pointed out that this is done under affordable housing standards. But even in the presentation they presented, only about thirty percent, which is the, basically the legal minimum to qualify for this program is going to be designated. And they explicitly state in their disclosures that this will only be allotted, these, these units will only be allotted for those qualifications for the minimum time required by the state. I think this project is an attempt to bully the town into complying with state compliances and shoving as many units in to make as much profit as they possibly can, while, while hiding behind the shield of the bare minimums of law. I do not think this is a good project for Bethel and I do not think this project should be allowed to move forward.
Thank you, Thomas. The next person is Bob Sutton, forty six Nashville Rose. Sir Sutton, come up, please. Please keep the chatter in the back down. Thank you.
All right. My name is Bob Sutton and I own forty six Nashville Road. So it's going to go through the back of my property. I talked to Mr. Coleman and asked him how close would it be? He said, I could get out and touch the car as we were going by on the road. I've lived in town my entire life. The family has owned the property at forty six. Three generations, we're ninety five years in. I didn't plan on retiring and living in planning and zoning, to tell you the truth. I do have concerns, mostly about the traffic. The other gentleman did bring it up, but a few years ago when Draper decided to put his apartments in next to my property, he had Lieutenant Durst run a traffic survey and it was, there's no undue traffic on Nashville Road. And I complained and said, next to plum trees and next to all Hollyville were probably the third busiest road going. And unlike plum trees and all Hollyville, once you get on Nashville Road, you're using that as a shortcut to go to over to fifty three. And I would advise, now, I mean, I did do coffee with a cop last year and talked to Mr. Morton, who was a police commissioner. Wouldn't we do something to show you how busy Nashville Road is? Like they do on all Hollyville, it will give the, the speed of the vehicle. And also it will allow the quote unquote number of vehicles. Because of the trestle, cars and trucks for the most part have to come through Nashville Road. They can't use fifty three. And when they don't run the trains in Beaufort due to some problem, you have Peter Pan buses going up. And if you've ever seen Ferris mulch trucks coming down, they can barely get through at one time. So the amount of traffic on Nashville Road is ridiculous. And I have brought that up to the police commission. And I had Mr. Carter, once I was dealing with Mr. Draper. I, I looked at the thing and it, it doesn't fit in with what the town of Beaufort is, to tell you the truth. You got a five story building. And Beaufort used to be single family houses. From Weedle from the fifties and sixties, Pressmar. From the sixties and seventies, Sliner when he first started, the person that dealt built on the countryway and Star Lane. They dealt, if we're going to build something, let's build some senior housing. That's how it used to be. When a person got old, they downsized, he moved into a retirement community, moved to the Florida or something like that. And that would allow new people to take over the housing. But nowadays, it seems that somebody comes in and all they mention is eight three oh, affordable housing and planning and zoning. And accepted, and if it's not accepted, then the developer takes them to court until they win. Saunders and Draper are two examples. So that's all I want to say is that the traffic down Nashville Road is terrible and there should be just something done about that.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Debbie Light, Seven Mountain Orchard Road.
Hi, and thank you for letting me speak. I'm going to try and speak quickly because I have a lot to say and please bear with me because there's a reason for it. To begin with, Nashville Road is in terrible shape. We have really bad potholes that are being patched on a regular basis, but I've seen cars with one and two flat tires. I myself have experienced that in the pothole. Now we want to add more traffic. The road is narrow. It's a country road. It is heavily driven. And across the street from where they want to build is number forty seven Nashville, which has been sitting empty, I'm going to assume for over thirty years. And off to the side of it is a dump truck that's been sitting there that long and a backup polluting the earth because they built the house without moving them out. And that sits there empty and nothing's being done about it. So while I'm here, I just wanted to bring that up. Because, okay, now the blasting, I have a real issue with it. Whether it was the last segment or it's this one. And for a couple of reasons. One, I had a bakery and cafe in town for eight years. I was a state licensed wildlife custodian for ten. The damage that it's doing to our ecology, never mind our land. My house has suffered terribly because of Costa. When he was allowed to do Good Hill Road. It has literally washed my bank away. I had a forty five degree angle bank that I could walk. Now it's either ninety degrees or a hundred and eighty degrees. I have to stand there and go like this to run. So, and that's because his blasting changed the underground springs. So this past winter, I was out there. Now I'm seventy four years old. I'm out there with a pickaxe chopping ice in my driveway. Across the road on Mountain Orchard was all ice at the end of my driveway. At the other end of my property, it was all ice. I didn't chop that. But, you know, this, the town has been very good about plowing and sanding. But this is all the underground springs from the blasting because it shifted it. What's going to happen on Nashville? Now they have all this water diversion that they're talking about and, and personally, I think the thing is ugly. I think it looks very sterile and like it should be in Japan, but that's my personal opinion. But where is all this water going to go? And, and all the blasting. Now, I'm going to touch on the wildlife. I can't handle any more people writing, oh my God, there's a raccoon in my yard. Who can I call to get rid of it? There's a fox. There's a bear. There's this, there's that. Where are they supposed to go? We're taking all their land. We're taking their homes. Oh, well, we can relocate them? Well, let me tell you, they've had maybe a thirty percent chance of survival when we relocate. Because one, they don't have a home. They don't have a food source. They don't know where the water is. And animals, just like people, are territorial. If somebody walked into your home, would you let him take up residence? I don't think so. Well, animals are the same way. They are very protective of their area. So these animals that are being relocated are either getting killed, being eaten while they're starving to death, or they're trying to get back to their families because believe it or not, the wildlife is very, very devoted, probably more so than most humans. So I have a real concern with it. And as far as I'm concerned, that's a safety issue. Because now you're driving the wildlife into people's backyard. That's a safety issue. So, okay, I said my piece. Enough is enough. Oh, one more thing. John Muir once said, when you tug at a single thing in nature, you find it's attached to the rest of the world. Those are really important words. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sutton. We have Seven Mountain Orchard. Rick Sutton, Seventy Wolf Fitz Road.
Couple of things that I know is, I lived on Nashville Road for fifty seven years. And I moved out in two thousand and fourteen, but I still travel that road every day. I don't know where he comes up for where anyone figured out the cars because I lived at forty eight Nashville Road. And in order to get in there and out of there in between four and six, if somebody didn't try to let you in or out, you couldn't get in or out. And all the traffic was backed up. Next thing that, what about with the blasting that's taking place? Where is, because it's all lake up in there. Up in the back. What do they do with all the blasting? Are they protecting everybody's property? You know, we haven't heard, you know, I mean, you're, you're. You know, we haven't heard, you know, I mean, you're, you're going right and back to forty-six and other places. So are, how are they protecting all of that? Are they taking pictures of everything? And the next thing, the question for the board, do we even have a fire truck that goes five stories up? I mean, we are a volunteer fire department. Do we have that type of equipment for the volunteer fire department? Do we? Does anybody know? You know, I mean, we are, again, volunteers. We're not a paid fire department. You know, that's, that's the questions that I think that we need to look at. You know, we, we talk about you can't stop the thirty G unless there's a safety issue. Could these, some of these be safety issues? You know, that's my concerns right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Um, Deborah Sutton, Seventy Wolf Fitz Road.
Um, my, my question's been addressed, Paul. Thank you.
Uh, Kevin Sutton, Fifty-five Nashville Road.
Yeah, I'll make it quick. My concerns are pretty much the same as everyone else is, uh, with the traffic. I've lived there since I was in second grade. And now when the traffic is from town where the light is, it's all the way up past my house. I live five houses past Overlook Park entrance. And that is from four o'clock till about six-thirty, maybe seven, that it stays like that. The other concern is the drainage pipes that go down Nashville Road. They're only eighteen inches thick. And when there's no rain, they're only about nine feet or nine inches open. So when it does rain heavy, there's a river that runs down Nashville Road. You know? And then when it gets cold, it ices up. So those are my main concerns, traffic and then water drainage. And I know they did say it would have new things, but it's still gonna run down. So I think they need bigger drainage pipes all the way down Nashville Road. But we'll see.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Sutton. Uh, Jenny, I'm sorry, Tezhar, is that right?
That's it.
All right, Forty-two Plum Trees Road.
I have one comment and two questions. Um, the questions really are related to the quality of of living in Beaufort, particularly if you're a resident of either Nashville Road or Chestnut Street. First, I'd like to know how high the proposed building will rise above the bridge line, or to put it another way, how many levels of the building will be visible from Chestnut Hill Village and its neighboring houses on Chestnut Street? Um, the, the second question has to do with the kind of lighting that is planned at the building for the exterior and for the parking lots and how this will impact neighbors. And my comment is, on the presenters spoke about the building being ideal for people who are working in our school system, municipal building, places like that in town. Um, those people go to work five days a week, and they go in and out of properties during peak hours. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I have BJ Liberty, Eight Grand Street.
Hi. Um, first of all, solely engineering. You did a very clear presentation, and I appreciated, um, the information you gave. Having said that, the traffic study that the state that you referenced in your thing, which was done by the DOT, um, was done in twenty-twenty-two. And the pandemic was officially declared over in twenty-twenty-three. So I'm thinking that that traffic study may not be valid. Um, secondly, um, your egress and leaving, leaving in and out, um, which was done by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, was for mid-rise building, which was four to ten stories. So that's good. Um, not close to rail lines. That's good. But does it differentiate between a five-story building in an urban city versus, um, the town of Beaufort where, you know, you have to drive to Danbury to get some stuff and, you know, there's more ins and outs and distance driving with little public transportation in that area? Um, safety analysis. Um, for the years, um, twenty-two to twenty-five, there were, there were no accidents. And your report quoted, no accidents were identified along roadway segment of Nashville Road in the vicinity of the property frontage. Um, which is fine, right in front of your building. Okay, maybe not a big accident area. But as was pointed out, the intersection with South Street, Chestnut, Nashville, and Greenwood is, you know, a different area, and you're gonna be generating traffic to go that way.
Uh, Peter Hostin, is that right? Sixty-nine Nashville Road?
Sixty-nine Nashville Road, correct. Okay, uh, I bought my house on Ninety-Four. When I bought my house, it was safe to walk on Nashville Road. There was no speeding, as smart as we see today. There was no congestion on by South Street on the stop signs of the current life. I had Peter Trickers scanned through my house, and, and I enjoyed it. Now everything is that. You cannot even safely pull out out of your driveway. That's as much traffic as on Nashville Road. You have to imagine that all the traffic which cannot sit under fifty-three bridge comes through Nashville. And, uh, the, the driveway for proposed, uh, site, it's gonna be so close to South Street that like, like previous speakers said, the fire trucks won't be able to, the arc bars won't be able to go soon. There is a problem with the infrastructure. If your infrastructure tends to support the power draw on that building. The drainage, the water supply. Uh, as far as I know, our water supply is very inadequate. So I have questions about it. All those people gonna take shower at the same time I gonna work. I've already been there for so many years. And, uh, other thing is affordable housing. Why, why is just gonna three? I mean, it's just a fearful, uh, the requirements that all would be a good for to maximize the cost, I mean, the profits from the building. I understand that. I'm a builder from the professional part. I mean, there should be a stop to, to expansion. I mean, like you said, you check the rental rentals in Beaufort, when it's good, but this town Beaufort should support every person who wanna rent in Beaufort. It's not required from Beaufort to support everyone who wanna move to Beaufort. It's, it's the market. It's saturated right now. Jobs move something out. It's gonna get desaturated. So it's gonna be more rent. I mean, why don't promote something which is uh, fully, which fully goes with, uh, with the sense of Beaufort, with the atmosphere of Beaufort? And suddenly we're gonna have the factory building? This is, for me, it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have Joseph Campbell, Forty-two Nashville.
It was brought up that I have an unfinished house that it wasn't causing me. It was because I tried to get through the commission to, uh, put a pipe in front of the house to go have a driveway. I was denied three times. I spent over forty thousand dollars on engineers and people, surveyors to, to get this through, and I was denied because they said, you need another map. Well, I'm a plumber. I know water doesn't run uphill, but they thought water should run uphill. So I'm, I, I'm, I'm trying to finish the house now because I had a neck operation. I broke four vertebrae in my neck. I was on a commission for two, three, three years now. I'm, I'm back in business again. But the, the situation is, I planned to put that thirty-inch pipe in, cover it up, put sidewalks in, make the road a little wider. But I was, I was not, I was denied. Okay, because they thought I was pulling a fast one or something. I wasn't trying to pull a fast one. I bought that property, and it was actually a two-family dwelling. They wouldn't allow me to put a two-family. It was single-family. So the thing is, I'm not against, but, but I'm a plumber. And I know that that, that was brought up, that, that pipe that leads from the reservoir up by Quay Run is so bad. It was like eighteen inches. It's a corrugated pipe, and it was steel, maybe seventy years ago. It, it's all rotted out. It, it doesn't take away anything. I know that, when I live in a forty-nine Nashville, I see these floods that would run down the road and crest down over by Draper's house, and then wash into, into the road, and then wash out the road. And then the town comes up and, well, we'll put a few rocks on this. If you look there, you'll see a few rocks on that side of the road because the right side of the road is, is ledge. They can't make it wider there. But in my deed shows that the town that owns more property, road frontage, in front of my property, like eleven feet. And I would have deeded it to them, but I'm the wrong, I'm, I'm the wrong kind of guy. I mean, I have gray hair. Maybe that's why. I don't know why. But the situation is, the road's gotta be, the drainage is very bad. An unlicensed plumber in the state of Connecticut, I'll give you my license number. The sewer is eight inch. It was, it was transite, and it's not that great a shape. And they're gonna add these seventy units, and people go to the bathroom. And they walk houses up the road. That sewer is not really adequate for the amount of use that gonna be used. I would grant you the water main is a twelve, a twelve-inch cast iron water main. And it's adequate, but the sewer and the drainage is very bad. Now, you know, when that drainage goes down in front of um, Overlook Park, goes under Overlook Park's entrance. It crosses over and runs through somebody's basement. A twenty-inch pipe goes through somebody's basement. And then it spills out into a little culvert there. And, and the whole thing is, oh, excuse me, excuse me. But it's real hairband. It doesn't gonna work, and the road is too narrow. And now you got this development. Now these, all these units are gonna be without children. What are you gonna do with seventy units? Some of them gonna have children, maybe one child or two, but there's gonna be buses parked on Nashville Road. And if a bus parks, because my granddaughter used to sit there. But she, she still lives in Forty-nine Nashville. She came. The bus sits there. No cars can get by, and it's a real bottleneck. Now, what happens when you got twenty-five children coming down the driveway, and you gotta get on the bus, and it takes time to get children on buses? I mean, it's gonna be a real tough deal there with the traffic. And then, like we brought up about the fire truck. When they go, they come down there, so they gotta turn into South Street. That's a, that's a real difficult turn. I mean, I mean, the town has to, if they develop this property, it's gotta be some money left over to do some development on the road and the drainage, because it was put up to me to do this twenty-five, thirty thousand dollar, and bankrupt me, and they denied me. You know, I mean, homeless put me in bankruptcy because they said, here, you're denied. Then go to the office, then go to engineers, go to this, do it over again. Stayed, they decide, go where the pipe goes. We don't want that. We want a new route. I says, water doesn't run uphill. You know, doesn't want to pill. They didn't believe me. Denied.
Mr. Sutton, I'll have to cut you off, but, um, I am sympathetic to your issues, but I want to keep our comments direct to the, this application in front of us. Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, I have Cynthia Williams. Eighty-nine Nashville.
On behalf of my sister and I, uh, many of the concerns have already been addressed uh, by a lot of the neighbors who live on the road. Um, particularly the idea that the trucks have to use Nashville because they can't use fifty-three. So it isn't realistic, a lot of what has been said about, um, the, the traffic that's gonna bottleneck at the end of the road. It's a very dense residential spot as it is. And so, um, with all that's already been said, which I agree with, and I appreciate, um, the neighbors having said that. That's my, that's our concern too, that the traffic is, is thick as it is now, and that what was presented, I don't believe is realistic.
Thank you, Mrs. Sutton.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Tia Murphy, Thirty-seven Linda Lane.
Thank you. Um, I, I, most of my concerns have been addressed, but there's a couple of that, that I am concerned about. Um, one, and I know the denial would be about safety issues, right? But there's an aesthetic here. There's, we're talking about a five-story building. Is there another five-story building anywhere in, in Beaufort? There isn't. And if I remember correctly, a number of years ago, this board, although, uh, different people on it, denied a, a hotel being put out on Stony Hill that was gonna be five stories. Because we don't have five-story buildings in Beaufort. We only want to have two-story, three-story buildings. So we're, we've denied something in a commercial area, but now we're gonna put it into a densely residential, mostly single-family, a, a few duplexes in that area. That's a big concern. The next thing is that, um, if you, the look and feel of that building, and I love that modularity. I am a certified aging in place, a tax professional. I was, uh, had my certification and did a lot of work with AARP for people aging in place. So I can appreciate a lot of what they're talking about. But it's, it's not appropriate for where we are and, and what our needs are here in this community. Aesthetically, it's a problem. But let's talk about another one. Somebody was talking about the fact that there are going to be children. How are those kids gonna get down to that, um, to the bottom to be able to get the bus? Somebody's gonna have to drive them down, right? Because I don't think they can be walking down there, especially in our icy winters or very, very hot days that seem to be coming earlier and earlier. That's an issue. You got how many kids? It's gonna be a number. They're gonna have to get down there. As somebody else was just talking about with the buses, um, backing up on the, on the road. You know, the school buses are allowed to come in on private property, so they have to remain on the road. And if that is true, and somebody else was talking about how long it takes to get kids on a bus. I live in Linda Lane. The buses stop every driveway, it seems like, to pick up the kids. Not like in my day, I'd be myself. Everybody had a hot bus stop. We all walk through it. Doesn't happen anymore. Everybody's at the top of their driveway, right? So, so that's, that's an i- issue. I watched the kids getting on the bus. It does take a long time. That's gonna back everything up. And I think the, the other thing is just, I can appreciate the amount of the, the kind of housing that is needed here in Beaufort. But I think we need to be very concerned about and careful about any of these issues that begin to change the nature and the look and feel of this town. We need to think about that. The very concerning thing. That's really my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sutton. Is it a meta COPAC? Did I say that correctly?
A meta.
A meta, I'm sorry.
Yeah, all the concerns that I had were already addressed, so pretty much the same thing. Traffic, maybe, or safety of the kids that would be living on that property if they were living there, uh, when they're going on the boat, school bus, and And the overflowing sewer. So, that's basically it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have Paul Wells, seventy-one Chestnut Street. Mr. Wells? We'll try him again at the end, see if he's, maybe he's the rest of it. Robert Ez- Ez- Ezep? Did I say that right? Robert Ezep, ten Nashville extension? No? Okay. Frank Hada, sixty-seven Grassley Plain. Frank? Come on up, sir.
Well, this young lady pretty much expressed what I was, my whole theory of this town is uh, all about aesthetics. I had a science job for thirty years. And tried to make the town beautiful, that's what I had on my mind. But this building does not belong in Bethel, no. It's a cool building. It's, I like the modular aspects. I think it's got a lot of good things going for it. Um, doesn't belong in Bethel. It's, the architecture, whoever your architect is, dude, like, give me a piece of pen, pencil and a piece of paper and I will draw you a better building for this town. That's all we gotta say.
Frank, uh, is it Nancy Ryan, twenty-five Walnut Hill?
Thank you. Um, it's good to see so many neighbors here today. And I say neighbors, even though we don't all live on Nashville Road, because we're working out for our town. My opinion, I would be against this particular building in this location. Now, a lot of people have said that. I'm gonna say it. And I'm saying it partly, I mean, I like that modular concept and the layout, et cetera. Not there. And I'm not even sure, maybe up in Stony Hill where a lot of the apartments are, but yeah, we wanna have some things downtown. And when we look at some of the things that have been built downtown, closer to the downtown area, we have the apartment on Grand Street that looks like New England buildings. Keep that into consideration. Nashville Road, traffic study, I don't believe your traffic study. I drive on Nashville Road. I sometimes use it as a cut through to get to fifty-three. I know some folks that live there. You've lived there for so long, like I've lived in where I've lived for so long. And I, my question would be, and it's sort of a broader question, is our town getting eight-thirty G to that?
Yes.
And we have had so many applications over the past couple of years. And over the years, there've been a few here, a few there, but a past couple of years, eight-thirty G. I think what people don't realize, and I think this is the case, is that, yes, you, you use eight-thirty G, setting aside a specific number of units that count towards the points, like Bethel gets. Every town has to have so many affordable units. They don't have to stay affordable. Somewhere down the road, they become market price. So, how's that help? Well, another person comes in, well, eventually we're gonna run out of land to put the eight-thirty G stuff on. I know it's a state statute. I know sometimes your hands are tied by it, yet somehow we need to look at it and do something differently because right now, it's not in my backyard. It's in your backyard. It's gonna be in my backyard because town is my backyard. So, I think we need to do something about all of these eight-thirty G. If eight-thirty G makes it so that, I mean, my que- my question would be to you, whoever's gonna answer it at some point. Could a five-story, large building, large rectangular-shaped building be plopped on a vast property if there was no eight-thirty G? And I'll stop there.
Thank you very much. I have Penny Kessler.
Penny Kessler, what's your address? Twenty-two Springfield, right?
I do.
Here, I thought I was gonna be original. So, I admit, I use Nashville as a short route from Route fifty-three to my house. So, I'm gonna just join the chorus. I cannot believe that anybody will believe that there is no traffic on Nashville. Really? Um, I am very concerned about all of the other things that this project is destroying existing vegetation. And we're always talking in planning and zoning, or at least we did, when I was on planning and zoning, we were always talking about green. Green spaces, green spaces. This is taking the equivalent of a hotel and flopping it and really, and just ruining the ecology altogether. I'm, I'm not opposed to the building. I think it's kind of cool. Um, I love the idea that you don't have to clean it, I think, you know? That works for me. Um, but I do have a question for the commission. Um, because this is something that we used to do. If this is approved, or you choose to go down that route for whatever reason, um, is, will there be a requirement that the developer work with our town architect? Because this is, I, you know, this is just like, not even remotely that area. I'm not talking about character. I'm not talking about neighborhood. I'm talking about the architecture of that particular area. Just, it, it, it's, it's, it's like, I can't even describe what it's like. So, I'm wondering if there is, will be a requirement to, I, and I don't even know that what can be done with this type of project. I have no idea. So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Glenn Field?
Yep.
Sixty-nine-one D Chestnut?
Yep. Um, everybody said pretty much what I wanted to say, but I have some doubt that this building would be a stellar example of modern engineering and everyone would, anyone that lives there would love to live there. But, um, one, I don't know what kind of a precedent it would set for this town to have a five-story building. Because today, it's Nashville Road. Tomorrow, it's going to be, who knows where, Old Holyville Road? Um, pardon me?
Overlook Park?
Wherever. Um, also, um, position it as a favor to our town, I think is an insult personally. Um, the need for housing, I feel, is being met to, uh, an extent that is almost unnecessary. We've got forty-two going up on Whitney. They've got the building that was Boggi's Woodworking. Uh, the corner of fifty-eight and three oh two. There's twenty-two homes being built over in Stony Hill at some point in the near future. And all the apartments that are being built in Stony Hill. Um, outside of the traffic and that sort of thing. As Tia was saying, my concerns are more for the aesthetics. I am not as diplomatic as she is, and I don't find it the least bit attractive. I think it looks like a mausoleum or a self-storage unit, building. And it does not fit into whatever you wanna call it, the charm, the character, the personality of this town. And I can hear it in, I've seen the changes in the last few years, and I can hear it in a couple more years. Bethel used to be such a nice little town. And I really believe it's obvious that it's being destroyed by all of this building. Um, that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. We have Susan Conway, ninety-three D, Chestnut?
Yes, um, Chestnut Hill Village.
Okay.
So, um, if you would please just, I'd like to mirror what everybody has said in this room tonight. Um, but what I would like to add to it is, you know, the five-story building, we talked about one-bedroom, two-bedroom, are, are they one bath? Are they all gonna have one bath? Uh, or is it gonna be multiple? The other is, yeah, there're gonna be children there. Are there sidewalks? I didn't hear anything about sidewalks coming down that very long driveway. Um, and then further into Nashville, um, will there be sidewalks planned for that whole entire area? People, the whole charm of this is, is walking into downtown. And you know, people who live that close to downtown are gonna wanna walk there. So, there's a health and safety issue right there. And that's they've accounted for that. So, I didn't hear anything about sidewalks in town as well.
Thank you.
Oh, one of, if you don't mind, of the fire department, do we have a truck that goes up five floors, five stories? That could put out fires?
Yes.
Would you?
We, we have that question down as well, so we will check into that for you. Uh, is it Kevin Ra- Rajan?
Ryan.
Raya. Twenty-four Forest Way?
Correct. Most everything I could think of is, is the exception of a few things. So, one is redundant and a thing would be ugly because it's so incongruent with the neighborhood that it's supposed to be replaced. Uh, I'm relatively new in the community, so I don't even know what the zoning laws permit. Such a building, you within this, the way the zone presently exists? Uh, no ready answer on that. Okay, and finally, uh, the applicant has presented many professionals in support of getting an approval. Uh, I lived in Ridgefield for twenty-five years. I was involved in a zoning issue there where after the applicant for a development put up their experts, uh, if we didn't have our experts to argue and do another position, they could have won quite readily. So, I just mentioned that if this thing were to be pushed forward somehow, there may be some additional steps we'd need to take.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Uh, Jefferson Chloe, on twenty-one, did I say that correctly?
I like Colly, go.
Colly, okay. Thank you. One-
I live on twenty-one Chestnut Ridge. Yes, I live on Chestnut Ridge and I walked up behind my house, including the three acres I gave to the town a couple of years ago to make a Congress lot along Ridge. And someone talked to us and looking as a mausoleum, it looks to me like a Motel Six. You might see that, Bradley. And the last thing I wanna do is walk up my hill over the ridge and see a Motel Six there. Um, I, further, I think the, the smokescreen that these guys are doing about, oh, we're gonna abide by fire code and drainage, and of course they are. I mean, that's not a selling point. That's a given. I can't build something that doesn't abide by fire codes, and you can't build something that doesn't abide by drainage laws. And I think the attorneys, I think what you said was that, so we do these low-income housing units and then we're done with them and we don't have to do any more. I think that's what you said, through sort of your double speak. And, and so, that is, that's stu-, that's dumb. That's a dumb reason to go ahead with this. Do this so we don't have to do it later. Um, another, uh, I think the so-called indigenous species landscape they had, not, not true. There's a big invasive grasses and trees, red maples, which are not native to purple Connecticut. The traffic thing, everyone's talked to as nauseous. It's just, the traffic study seems ridiculous. Fourteen cars in an hour? I don't think, I don't think, I think my impression is, these people come into Bethel, get their money, rape the town, and leave. And it has nothing to do with Bethel. They don't, will never have anything to do with Bethel again. And my guess is that a couple of years after getting full occupation of this building, they'll sell it for a gigantic uh, profit and move on to the next town they wanna win. I think that's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, JP Jordan? Thank you. Twenty-four Wolfers Room?
I just had a couple of questions, please. Concept of an HUE, housing unit equivalent points was brought up, and for fifty-three and a half year, points would be contributed to Bethel. The question is, how many of these HUE points does Bethel have now? And how many points does it need to qualify? And here, I may be getting two concepts wrong. I don't know if it's to qualify for moratorium or whether to qualify for ten percent. Uh, I leave that to you. There was another thing, I, I pulled down the price table from the state, which tells me that we are no closer to achieving the goal of ten percent affordable housing. Twenty-eleven, Bethel had five-point-two percent. In twenty-twenty-three, Bethel had five-point-two percent. So, this is going to be a never-ending process from what I can see in long term. Uh, Reading, by the way, has zero percent. And it had zero in twenty-eleven and it has about point-two in twenty-twenty-three. How do they manage to avoid it?
Thank you. Uh, I have Susan Miller, online. Ms. Miller, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Uh, what's your address?
Thirty-two Nashville. Yeah, uh, many of the points that have been made are points that I would have made, that I agree with, so I'm, I'm going to be fairly brief here. Um, I, I have to say that I appreciate that, uh, the need for affordable housing is being looked at in, in Fairfield County. It's certainly an issue that needs to be addressed. I'm a retired teacher. Um, I understand why Bethel would be a good choice, but I don't understand why you would plunk this thing on Nashville Road. No structure remotely resembles this. There's no, it's not pedestrian-friendly at all. And of course, we've talked about the traffic of which Nashville Road is notorious for. I see the backed-up cars that back up from the stop sign at, um, Chestnut Hill every day in front of my house. The trucks are horrendous. Do you think that that's going to be okay once this monolith gets built? No. This is a modular building. It's a glass cube. I have a beautiful backyard and I'm afraid that I'm gonna be able to see this from my backyard. This is, this, this true, this is an insult to Bethel. And I can't believe that this idea was even entertained to plunk this glass modular building that looks like it comes from Mars on Nashville Road. Why couldn't you, why, why not Stony Hill? It's close to eighty-four. There's a lot of shopping there. There's bus routes. Nashville Road is the last place that you should put something like this on. It's, it's inconceivable to me and it angers me, and I'm sure, I know it angers my neighbors as you've heard from so many people spoken already. Um, I can't really add to any more issues that have been talked about already, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Shannon Ryan?
Three issues and address the current.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, and then I see one more online, Laurel A. Allen. Are you with us? Ms. Allen? All right, we got a couple more people that we didn't answer the call. We had Paul Wells, are you here? Or Robert?
We're trying to get on. We had a mic.
Laurel, first.
Hi, uh, this is actually Tim Drake. I'm on Laurel's computer, forty-eight Aunt Patty's Lane West, Bethel. Um, a couple of, uh, questions for the, uh, commission and the applicant. And also a statement in the beginning here. Um, what I see is a lot of, uh, people don't like the aesthetics of this building. That's quite not really what you're gonna do away eight-dash-thirty-G projects with. So, my question is, can the town council for planning and zoning, Mr. Anders, please explain to the public how eight-dash-thirty-G can be denied? If other than health or safety? I'm, I'm listening. I'm all ears. Because I'm tired of my money and taxes and the taxpayers' money go into appeals and the, and we get the same result. the, and we get the same result, results, the town of Bethel gets the same results. We lose, period. So maybe you should get some real counsel on how this can happen. That's first thing. So that would be to Mr. Anders, that's your counsel that you use for these, for these matters. Second thing is, this is to Vessel Technologies. Well, they suggested that this during their presentation, that is needed for workforce, uh, workforce housing. That's basically a fit to work for eight dash thirty G. My question is, are they using any local contractors as suppliers? Or do they use all external contractors and supply companies? And then the third thing is, has the town of Bethel reached out to the current property owner to purchase this property? Cause they've done this before and I can tell you right now, one was on Hickok Avenue and one was on Shelley Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I'm just writing, so I'm, I'm writing all the questions down. Tim was, uh, talking real fast. Okay, um, is there anyone else that has not spoke already? Sure, is that Nico back there?
Yeah.
Come on up, Nico. Uh, your address.
Number two, please. Nicholas Jordan, Nico Jordan. Good evening. Um, I just had, I'm saying good things. Um, I don't think the not in my backyard, um, unfortunately holds any legal weight with the state. Um, we do have, uh, other issues with the site potentially that come to mind. Um, there's, we're having a problem down the bottom of the hill. There's critical flood storage capacity issues with the downtown intersection where Carol Lucy's is, a natural road comes in and Chestnut Road comes down. There are two kind of unnamed brooks, watercourses that are perennial watercourses. They're not intermittent, intermittent. Um, and when it rains, we just saw a big flood events come and they completely inundated and blocked up the entire sewer system underneath downtown Bethel is all channeled into old, very old, maybe like early, uh, stone culverts under Carol Lucy's and then Route Two, Seeley Street. It's all like maybe seventeen hundreds, maybe eighteen hundreds stone. Drain system was asked, this couldn't take the water, I only saw anyway. So with this site, you know, any sort of alteration to that mountain side, basically, which the existing site conditions show, it's a series of like very ledgy, you know, rock out props, but they have depressions. It's not all straight up and straight down. There's low points within the, the grading. Have to look at it because that, you know, probably holds a lot of sand water and infiltrates it, revolving system, forest that are there as well. Will, it retains a lot of the stormwater. So however they did their drainage calculations, we have to really look into it and make sure that it does not, you know, they can show how are they showing that it doesn't have any, um, that it decreases the, the post development, the stormwater runoff is, is less than the predevelopment on site. I would have questions about that, um, because if we see any more on the, on the road there, including the driveway, I know several driveways collected for how, I want to look into that, I would, because that's a big driveway. If that just goes into the, the, it wouldn't go into the sewer system, I guess, the public sewage, but if it goes into that, then it's a game over for the downtown area there. And, um, yeah, it's also a question of not just the ecological and we'd be losing this entire, you know, you know, ecological area, which I don't think is a site, a sidewalk yet, that definitely should be, I'm not sure it will be. And there's a historic preservation element as well, I think they were missing. I just briefly look inside, I think shows that they were planning on forty-eight. The one on the left, as you're looking at the hill, is that, is that right? To remain and then fifty, which is the more historic, the future of the building, nineteen hundred on record. Um, and frankly, a much more attractive looking building, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the other one, please, if it does pass, do not leave that one standing. I would implore you, take it down. Sorry, sound course. Um, forty, you know, was an mess up. Or, but I would need to really work on leaving it more historic, more, ecstatically freezing, better built, older building in place if that's possible. So yeah, stormwater and, and what?
Excellent.
We can afford to lose it, it would be, all of those would be damaging to the health, well-being and some of them.
All right, I'm going to open it up to, uh, commission.
Did I have one question that I kind of forgot? What's it to do with the stuffish system? Because stuff, don't we pop all ours to Danbury? So if we're going to put in all of this housing, so Danbury, have any say with the subject?
No, I didn't.
All right, Kenny. Going to pad up.
Um, I like, it's like everyone who came in, a lot of great questions, a lot of things to think about. This is going to go on for a while, so don't lose faith, just keep coming to the meetings and we're, we're going to figure this out.
Yeah, exactly what Kenny said.
When it's in that meeting.
Uh, two weeks from now, right?
July twenty-second.
July twenty-second.
Yeah, it's nice to see this many people come out and support, you know, the efforts here. So, uh, right now, as far as related to the project, I don't have anything to comment.
I think, uh, a lot of people here, a lot of the neighbors in the community have expressed a lot of things that I was concerned with. But I did also just look at, you know, again, to echo, oh, I think BJ Liberty said, great presentation, really do appreciate that. You did try to get ahead of a lot of things, but a lot of the other developments that I looked at throughout the state, where it's ones that are approved, going through the approvals or you've built Avon, Glass Mary, Rocky Hill, I listed all the addresses, Chatcher, West Hartford, I know you pulled your application there, um, they're all in commercial zones, which a little bit better, the aesthetic of what you guys are trying to do here. I, I know that's not a reason for denial, but it just doesn't feel appropriate for what we're trying to do here. It, it really actually bothers me a lot, like five stories, modern building in the middle of single duplexes, like not to mention the ecological impacts that were, were mentioned here today, just, just that ridge coming across and walking, I used to live up on Chestnut Ridge, I know exactly what we're talking about up there. I do have a question, uh, those are my comments. Um, my question is, was there a pre-app meeting? And if so, what recommendations were made by the department? And what did you take from that meeting and did you adapt your plan at all from that? Um, because I think it's important to work with the, instead of just showing up and shoving this down our throats, basically. Uh, I'm going to leave it at that. I know there's a lot of other comments from our commission members. I know a lot of answers are going to be coming from your way. And as Kenny said, there's going to be some other meetings to talk about sometimes.
Can I ask one question?
Uh, we're in commission comments, so.
No, I was just wondering, how many of these people on planning and zoning has walked through the property?
Oh, we haven't had a sidewalk yet.
Okay, thank you, that's all. But you will.
Yes.
For anything else you will take them off the grid.
It's enough, yeah, it's enough for us to ask more.
I agree with a lot of the people that spoke and, um, the, the initial mission numbers. Um, it's, it's really out of place. It's just too modern. Um, and it really doesn't fit in the neighborhood whatsoever. And I know that you don't have to meet our zoning requirements with eight dash thirty G, which I think is a real problem that needs to be addressed by the state. Um, and I think that everybody here needs to contact their representatives and make a big deal about that. Um, but it's going to just keep going on and, uh, I'm also concerned about the big long driveway and the height of it and, um, water coming down that, um, behind people's properties. Like it said about the trees, um, losing their leaves in winter, so you can see it. Um, and drainage has been a problem already, um, Nashville, I think that had been brought up before in other, other projects. So, um, all of those things that the neighbors and other people from town has brought up, I think are the, are valid things to address. And I would think that maybe the town make this smaller or whatever. I, I just, it doesn't fit in our town. Thanks.
Uh, thank you for coming in, thank you, townsfolk for coming out and joining us for this evening. Uh, so I have, I have a number of concerns. I think you've set yourself up for some huge safety concerns here. I think, uh, you cherry pick what you want to pick for, this is a walkable environment, so we're not going to provide a lot of parking spaces. Well, this isn't a walkable environment. Uh, you've been, that in your plans, there's no sidewalk down to the main road. You're saying it's not walkable. Yet you expect that seventy-five one-bedroom apartments are going to generate, there's only eighty-three cars on site. And, and therein lies the problem, right? Because the way that's right to figure, as soon as someone double parks, as soon as you've had a few visitors or someone in the two-bedroom has a kid with a car and parents with a car, there's three for that one unit. Um, as soon as someone double parks in there, I guarantee you, there is a safety problem. Okay, and you had your fire advisor here, I've driven that platform, I've driven that chassis, that is a very unmanageable truck, especially if there's something in the way. Okay, then you are, you are setting yourselves up for tremendous failure here. I also think you're setting yourselves up for failure of these kids, if, if they're going to be kids, I mean, you can't deny there's going to be kids there, walking down to the bus, right? There's nowhere for them to go. And I think your traffic numbers are delusional as well. Uh, you know, to think that, hey, this is a driving community and we're going to have, we're going to have eighty-three cars on site, but only ten of them are going to leave in the morning, fourteen are going to come back later on. People are going to go to work, all those cars are going to go out, right? People are working, these are working people, you're bitches for working people and that's, that's not what this recipe looks like. Um, I'd even suggest you're creating an attractive nuisance by, by thinking that people aren't going to have cars and they're going to walk downtown on Nashville Road. And so it's a tremendous problem. I, I'd encourage any of you to try to take a walk on Nashville Road. All right, so I, I follow my law. You can get if I drive, walk into your own mailbox on your own property. But I think you're creating an attractive nuisance, so I have a tremendous safety concerns of this project. Cool, Finney?
So I, I'm not going to repeat all the comments, I subscribe to them all that were made by the commission. I, um, I am almost a hundred percent certain that the town does not have a ladder truck with a five-story, I guess, almost a hundred percent certain. Uh, so who's going to pay for the truck? That falls into what, to provide safety to those people? Again, I'm not going to repeat all the stuff pertaining to the traffic study and the lack of parking and parking is going to spill on the access road, which is going to create a problem under icy conditions with people slipping and sliding and bumping into somebody else's car, plus if there's an emergency, you have the ambulance that needs to get in and out and if there's a fire, yeah, it isn't going to happen. So I recognize everybody has the right to develop their own property. That's what we're all about. I recognize that under eight thirty G, the only thing that we can object to is safety concerns. But maybe this is a great project for Verona, New Jersey, but not for Vessel, Connecticut.
Uh, Dan, you have anything?
I reserve my comment, well, actually I won't. I think, I think everybody hit the nail on the head tonight. Um, I'll compliment you on a very good, well-run public hearing there, Mr. Chairman, and especially the folks in the audience tonight, because I know how big of a deal this is in town. It's, development's the number one issue we have, there's no question. And I'll compliment each one of you who took your time and recognize what was said before and then say your piece, it was a very well-done public hearing. And I know this is a beginning, so thank you for staying engaged.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Legner, do you have anything?
Uh, my concerns are with the, with the fire safety. It's one thing to get the truck to the fire, another thing to fight the fire with that configuration of a building, the five-story building. I was in a fire one time down in, uh, Myrtle Beach where they had built a fourteen-story building right on the beach and it put the parking garage between the roads and the building. They got the fire trucks to the parking garage that couldn't get anywhere near the building to even get anybody out of the building. Everybody had to mow through the doorway. The fire actually was in a laundry chute. It burned out the sprinkler system and the alarm system, so the only people that, where they knocked on your door, got out of the building. So, you know, it's, it's one thing to say we can get the truck there, another thing to fight the fire once you get there. And I don't think we do have the equipment, I agree with Paul, although we have the equipment to, to fight that type of fire or to evacuate that type of building with one of our ladder trucks. And I'm also concerned about the, you know, like they say about walking down the national road along that curved driveway. I think we, we have to look at that very closely. Is that going to be safe, is it going to be safe for kids to be down there by themselves waiting for a bus? There, there are some safety issues. Maybe they're not overwhelming, but they're, they're there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Paul, before you go, just one, one quick question. Uh, Kevin, when you were talking about rock blasting, you mentioned something about acid rock and I'd just love you to expand upon what that is. You know, when you go to town.
Um, I will echo, uh, Dan's comments. Uh, I appreciate the, the public cooperating, it's been a long, hot, sweaty meeting and, uh, and it's moved pretty smoothly. I will also thank the applicant for very clear, uh, well-done presentation. Um, that being said, uh, there was a question someone asked earlier, uh, would a five-story building be allowed if it wasn't eight thirty G? Uh, the answer is no. Uh, we have no five-story buildings in town, uh, that I know of. Uh, we recently reduced the overall heights that are allowed, uh, in our Stony Hill District, um, down to three stories. Uh, so just wanted to answer that question. Um, now, I have serious concerns, uh, like everyone else does. The, um, school bus, uh, situation, if, if children were supposed to stay there, uh, the parking, um, uh, Mr. Klein, you had mentioned earlier in your presentation about visitors coming in, uh, I don't see any visitor spots at all, uh, for parking. Uh, I see no sidewalk, um, the walk to the project from downtown, uh, there is no connecting sidewalk from downtown up to the project. Um, that is a very, very, very busy road. Um, I travel Nashville Road almost every day. Um, and there is no, um, cut through for trucks, there is, uh, trucks have to take Nashville Road all the time to add, um, forty-four vehicles, I'm just using my conservative thoughts and half the vehicles proposed on your spots have to be tremendous. The backup down by Nat by, um, South Street, uh, Greenwood, uh, Chestnut, uh, sometimes will back up past your, uh, development. So I have, I have concerns with, with that and just the, the, um, the, the, the traffic in that. Anything else, um, anything other than that, we'll, we'll wait to, to go to the people later on. Any other commission comments before I turn it back to the F two?
No, rain space, no.
All right, gentlemen, you have, uh, I don't know if you have some answers to some of the questions.
All right, gentlemen, you have, uh, I don't know if you have some answers to some of the questions that have been posed to you today?
Yeah, uh, we do. Thanks so much. We're mindful of the time. Uh, I think, you know, just looking at the comments from you folks, comments from our neighbors. I wanna get Joe back up here so we can talk about some of the fire concerns, particularly with the apparatus and the relation to the five-story building.
Yeah, if anybody's departing, uh, just watch out for Puddin Park Road around point two, it's closed. A tree just fell over it. There's some people filtering out. I don't know where folks are, but if you're on Puddin Park, there's gonna be a delay. DOT's gonna take a while.
All right, uh, for the record, Joe would say, um, as the building code, the fire safety code recognized, and again, when these documents are developed by the International Code Council, the National Fire Protection Association, um, the input is not only from the the residential industry, but from the International Fire Marshals Association. I myself chaired the NFPA Building Code Committee for ten years. I've served on it for over twenty as the representative of the International Fire Marshals Association. The International Fire Chief Association has representatives, voting members on each one of the committees. So these documents are not developed in a vacuum. Uh, there's a wide range of representation. No one member group on the committee can represent more than thirty-three percent. So if there was a standard for fire trucks, it can't be loaded up with fire truck manufacturers. It's got users and enforcers and, and et cetera. As buildings get taller, the codes adjust for that and change the type of permitted construction. They go from wood frame to protected wood frame, which means it has hourly fire resistance rings that hold the building up. Uh, it goes to non-combustible construction. Now, even though our building's allowed to be built out of wood frame, the designers have chose to go non-combustible construction, which means that the materials in the structure itself, the walls, the floors, the roofs, can't burn. They're non-combustible materials. All residential buildings are required to be sprinkler-protected. Uh, the sprinkler systems that are in the building and that are designed today and developed activate so quickly that when a fire occurs in a dwelling unit, if it were to, that, that fire is put out in ninety-three to ninety-seven percent of the instances with one sprinkler. It's that quick. Okay, it's that quick. Uh, typically, the fire doesn't usually grow to more than two feet. If you envision the trash can fire, the fire coming out of it, usually they get more than two feet above that, and it's extinguished. So about the time you hear your smoke alarm, give it about maybe thirty seconds, and that sprinkler's gonna activate. It's that quick. It's not the old commercial ones that we have, okay? Uh, the other issue, question came up about, um, accessing the roof. The code also recognizes, keep in mind, there's no requirement to have a ladder truck. Many communities don't. There's no requirement in state to have a fire department. Many towns have fire departments, six people. And when they go to mutual aid, they get eighteen people. That's the town's risk management. They've decided that that's acceptable. There's no requirement to have a ladder truck. The code recognizes that when the building goes four stories or more, at least one of the stairways in the building has to provide access to the roof, just for that reason. So whether it's four stories or eighty stories, there's gotta be a stairway that takes the firefighters to the roof. In addition to the sprinklers, when the building is three stories or more, there's a standpipe system. Standpipe system is basically a pipe inside the stairwell that has a hose connection valve. Cause in a house fire, one or two family home, the fire truck pulls up, they drag the hose off, they drag it across the lawn, up the driveway, into the house. That's a lot of pulling. Not due to fire on the third or fourth floor. That's a lot of hose to drag up there. So they take the hose back off the truck, they walk up the stairs, they hook up to the standpipe, they have to carry a minimal amount of hose. So all of these features envision taller buildings, more demanding buildings, without the input of fire department for the most part. And to make it safer. And that's the purpose. If you pick up the state building code, you pick up the fire safety code, it's to provide for a safe environment for the occupants who live there, the neighboring community, the fire department, and emergency responders who access the building through all of these features. Construction type, fire protection, compartmentation, extinguishment, alarm, training, as well as a maintenance. So it's all taken care of, and that's the standard of care. Does the project meet the building code? And does it meet the fire safety code? The answer is yes. That's the answer. It's compliant.
I think the only thing, if I may, in the correspondence we've had, Jake, Klein, again, the correspondence that we've had with the town fire marshal, but there's not been a concern raised about the height of the building. So presumably, if there was, hey, we can't can't stop the fire, we would have heard that from the fire marshal.
Yeah, as I said earlier, the fire code requires a certain width roadway, slope roadway, so that the fire truck can gain access. The only requirement is that a fire truck gain access to the building to within fifty feet of an exterior door that takes you in. Some fire marshals and fire chiefs will say, well, I want access all around the building. That would be nice, but on a constrained lot that's not available, and that's not what the code requires. So can you get a truck within fifty feet of an exterior door? You satisfy the code.
Um, you guys, I'm sorry, applicants, yeah, I know, but I apologize. We just have to keep the form here. Um, there were some questions about traffic, the traffic studies and drainage issues too. Kevin's
So, uh, again, Kevin Soli, uh, for the record, um, there was, obviously, there's a lot of questions raised and concerns regarding the drainage in Nashville Road and other areas of town where there's concerns regarding, you know, capacity to convey water and things like that. The biggest thing that happens during a storm event is how fast the water leaves a property. And in situations where there's a sudden burst of rain, you get a lot of rain, and then, you know, in a, in a short time period, all that water gets to the site fast. That's what contributes to flooding. What our application does is we're reducing that rate of runoff leaving this property for all the storm events that we've analyzed, going from the one-year storm to two-year to the ten-year to the, uh, fifty-year to the hundred-year storm. So, so this application would actually help any of those conditions, because we're reducing the rate of water, of runoff from the property. So, so if you think about it, because of our organizational tension systems, we're basically allowing, when that burst of rain happens, we're able to collect it, hold it back, keep it on our property, and release it slower than how it's released today. So, so ultimately, our, our, our proposal from a sort of movement system would actually help address and alleviate existing, existing things that happened today. Um, you know, there was also a lot of comments raised about, you know, really putting scrutiny into our analysis, and we welcome that. The town has engaged a third-party reviewing engineer, um, SLR, uh, in Cheshire, Connecticut. Um, they issued comments to us, uh, either late last week or even earlier this week. We actually had a call with them today to review their comments preliminarily. We're confident we can address their concerns. Um, and we did, and we will be providing a formal response to their comments, you know, uh, you know, addressing each one individually so that we can not only, you know, um, you know, demonstrate our compliance with the applicable requirements, but also satisfy their concerns. Um, the, you know, regarding traffic, um, there was a, a comment, um, regarding when the counts were done and two thousand twenty-two and potential, you know, influence with COVID and things like that. We collected, uh, actual traffic counts. We put out an automatic traffic recorder. We, we observed twenty-four-hour counts in May of this year. The references to those older studies, and what we like to do is we like to look at historical traffic, uh, traffic volumes that DOT establishes based on their, they have, uh, count stations throughout the state and throughout Bethel. We wanted to look at those to understand, you know, what the traffic patterns have been over the years. They did show a reduction during COVID, but we wanted to make sure our analysis was based on today's conditions and understanding, you know, what the volume of the vehicles are. We're not, we're not saying there's no vehicles on Nashville Road. We're, we're certainly not representing that. But what we did, and what our analysis shows, is that the vehicles that would be leaving our driveway, they, you know, if, if someone mentioned, okay, I'm, I'm leaving my house, I may have to wait a little while to pull out. Um, that, that is, congestion isn't a safety concern. And if someone happens to be stuck, if, if a resident here has to wait, you know, ten, twenty, thirty seconds to leave until there's an adequate gap in traffic, that is, that is something that a resident who would be living here would be accepting by, by living here. And, and congestion and delay doesn't represent a safety concern, um, you know, from a statutory standpoint, from a case law standpoint, all those. Um, and again, our analysis shows that, again, these, any vehicle leaving the site would, would experience a level of service be ten, eleven seconds delay at most, um, or on average, excuse me. Um, you know, and then there was obviously, I, I hear this all the time. There's, there's gonna be more traffic. You got a full parking lot, they're all gonna leave at the same time. I think everyone here can acknowledge that, you know, yes, there are certain people still that get up and leave and go to work at seven o'clock or eight o'clock or nine o'clock, but the workforce has been evolving, and we wanted to look at the most, uh, you know, the, the highest vol- volume of traffic in Nashville Road and put our trip generation based on the peak hour of what comes out of this facility to analyze that. So we really try to look at the most conservative. We're not saying that, um, throughout a twenty-four-hour day, that there won't be more cars leaving, but during that peak hour, that busiest hour, the volumes that we've identified, these are based on local, regional, national standards. The DOT requires us to use these trip generation rates when analyzing studies, when analyzing potential traffic impacts. So, you know, we're, we're, we're saying during those peak hours, we're very competent in the volumes that we've included in our analysis. So, uh, again, there could be people leaving an hour later, thirty minutes before the peak hour. It's gonna be spread out throughout the day. There's a lot more people working from home. Yes, there's still people that go to work, but some people leave at six, some people leave at seven, some people leave at eight, some people leave at nine. The, the, the workforce is evolved. Um, and, you know, trip generation adjusts accordingly. So we're very confident in our analysis, and this is something that DOT requires and prescribes for us to use. Um, so, you know, we do feel that our analysis is, 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 is gonna form in accordance with all applicable requirements and standards, and we're confident in our, in our analysis regarding potential impacts. There were a lot of comments regarding bus stops. There are bus stops on Nashville Road today. There's a bus stop at fifty-two Nashville Road. There's one at forty-nine fifty-one Nashville Road. Um, so that's So, so those happen, and, you know, i- if there are schoolchildren here, they will have to get to the bus stop and, you know, uh, uh, a lot of parents drive their kids to the bus stop, they wait with them, and then they leave. Um, so we don't think that would be any different than anything that happens today. Um, uh, Commissioner, uh, Kozlowski, you asked the, again, about the, the, my statement that I made regarding the Health Department comments. So, uh, Deep has, um, you know, City of Connecticut has bedrock maps. And there are certain types of rock formations that when you're removing, it could, there's a, there's a potential, um, for what's called acid rock drainage. Now, um, the town of Bethel has two different rock formations, uh, Ro and Ratlin Mountain. Um, those specific rock formations, if you're doing a development that has uh, large-scale earth disturbance, rock removal, processing, things like that, Deep has a guidance document. Um, it's a blasting guidance that basically says if you have this condition, there, there are potential concerns with how that material is handled, and if stormwater are run through it, you can have a potential for, uh, drinking wells. So they say that if you're within, if there are any wells within five hundred or a thousand feet, up to a thousand feet, it could be potential to impact those wells. We received a comment from the Health Department. We had a geotechnical engineer do a study here. We had, you know, we reviewed this, this, uh, concern and what the applicant has agreed to do as part of this application. There were three wells identified. We worked with the Health Department to identify any and all drinking well within that radius. There are three residences that currently have wells within that thousand feet, and the applicant has agreed to connect each of those residents to public water as part of this application to address any concerns related to the acid, acid rock drainage. Um, there are a lot of other comments raised tonight. Uh, as I indicated before, just received comments from, from the third-party purity engineer. We really wanted to engage and hear all the commission's concerns, so we could come back with some revised materials and try to address them to the best of our ability. Um, Jason, anything else for, for you?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be, you know, earlier this evening, someone said Kevin did a great job, and I was dumb, so I'll be brief.
And I, I do appreciate that.
But in, in all seriousness, there was a comment that, that was made, that, that stuck out. It was the first comment made. It was by Mr. Cronin, who's the president of H O Y, you're still here. I wanna be clear, speaking to you and also to you folks, one thing that we are not trying to do is to try and force anything upon anybody. Vessel is very, uh, you know, we're, we're here listening. We've heard some comments about, you know, is there room for supplemental parking spaces? That's something that we can look at in anticipation of the next hearing date. We've heard some comments about uh, uh, trees and open space and things of that nature. We'll look into that before the, the next meeting. Um, so I don't want anyone to think that we're just coming in and, and, and not listening to what is being said here this evening and what will be said in future occasions. Um, there was a gentleman, he left, uh, Mr. Sutton. He and I spoke on the phone a couple of weeks ago about this matter, and anyone, if you received a notice for this hearing, you have my contact information. I invite you to call me, and if there's a concern or comment, I'm happy to speak with you directly, set up a meeting with Josh, um, uh, anything like that. Uh, there were some comments about, you know, well, what's achievable? How does this comply or not comply with the zoning standards? And Mr. Chairman, you're right, the five stories doesn't, doesn't comply, and I think Joe, uh, uh, addressed how that does not present a fire hazard or safety concern uh, for purposes of this application. I think it's important, just to be fair, you know, the height doesn't comply, the density is more than what's permitted under the zone, but the building coverage is six percent, while the underlying zone allows thirty percent building coverage. The building that we're proposing far exceeds the front yard setbacks and the side yard setbacks that are, uh, applicable in the, in the building, in the zoning regulations to this. Um, so we comply with those important controls for development. And then the other side of that is that there is an opportunity cost, uh, to not sending us to this project. Uh, the number of homes that could be built, or what could be built, absent the application that Vessel is proposing, under the regulations today, are at most, by, by my look at the rank, thirteen single-family homes, with zero are required to be affordable. Some folks were saying we weren't doing enough affordable. Uh, we're doing substantially more than what's allowed, required, permitted under the current zoning regulations. So there's an opportunity cost of dozens of apartments and twenty-three, uh, affordable apartments, uh, if, if this project is, uh, is not approved. I think Kevin did a great job running through the traffic and drainage responses. Uh, and I think Joe's comments about the, the fire safety, uh, uh, are very, uh, very critical. So, uh, Josh, for leaking yours.
Quick question right before you go, Josh. You, you mentioned working with the neighbors and the town. Did you guys have a pre-op meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we did have a pre-application meeting with, with staff, uh, not with ma- the reason why we didn't have a neighbor meeting. Yeah, we did have a, uh, meeting with staff, uh, and there were comments, uh, I think there was, you know, uh, addressing, you know, density. We had a, a larger number of apartments before we filed the application. I think we had eighty-some-odd apartments before we filed the application. Uh, there were some comments about dotting i's and crossing t's in terms of fire safety, so Joe came on and made sure we addressed those. Um, not sure if there's anything else that is, that's sticking out in my head from, from that meeting. But I feel like we have been responsive to a number of concerns that were, that were raised. I mean, you know, like many applications, there's some things that we'll, perhaps we'll have to compromise on, so I can't say, we'll say yes to every want or desire, but our goal is to be, uh, responsive and responsible, uh, property owners and members of the community. Yeah, yeah, you go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'll, uh, I'll just wrap up for the evening and try to do a very quick one, because everybody's really hot. Uh, just first off, thank you to the commissioners as well as the members of the community for coming out. I realize that there are concerns about proposed development, and I appreciate the engagement. I think the board said that about the community. I, I feel the same way, and I understand the concerns. Um, I understand that there are, uh, plenty of people who don't like the design uh, of the building or its aesthetics and have concerns about the parking. Um, uh, at the same time, you know, I, I want you to know that we have taken great care in trying to produce something that is thoughtful and that also is innovative and sustainable and can provide a next-generation housing option. I realize that doing something like that is also, is also different, right? And it's, you know, we're, we are trying to do something different and that uh, sometimes means that it feels garring to a community. Um, you've heard from members of our team and, uh, our team and the experts that we've brought here today. Each of them brings deep experience in their field. I know that some of the things that people say are hard to understand. I do this every day of the week, and I don't always understand what a traffic's, what, 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 what traffic studies are saying or something to that effect. Um, but their goal, like mine, is to demonstrate that this is not just a building, but Um, but their goal like mine is to demonstrate that this is not just a building, but something that's thoughtfully engineered and a response to real challenges, um, and developed with rigor and flexibility and, and also humility. Um, and when I say that, you know, I think that goes to the idea of, you know, being open to comments and, uh, and, and input from both the community as well as from the commission. Um, you know, we recognize that no design is perfect and that meaningful public engagement includes listening much more than presenting. Um, and we're committing to working collaboratively with, uh, everybody here with the board and the town staff to address the feedback and concerns and ideas for improvements. We appreciate the improvement. We'll treat each comment and suggestion with the serious and the respect and respect that they deserve. We've obviously heard a lot from neighbors tonight. Um, I, I do not take that lightly. Um, it's, uh, it's something that, you know, I know is, uh, is very important, uh, within the community. You know, for, for all of us, um, myself included, our homes are our biggest investment and, you know, where we live is very important to us. Um, and I understand that things that are, uh, a change to the area and to, you know, the area surrounding our homes is uh, especially, uh, you know, concerning for people. Um, and, you know, at the same time, I hope everybody knows, you know, that there is this also balance of a deep need for, you know, sustainable, attainable workforce housing, uh, in Bethel, uh, not just in the state as a whole. Um, you know, the, I, I, I know people don't like the, the state law. I know that it's, uh, eight thirty G is a sticking point for people. Um, and so, you know, to say that the state legislature is, you know, acknowledged the urgency of, you know, the housing need, you know, probably doesn't mean a great deal to people. Um, but there's, you know, there's also the idea that no site is ever perfect. Um, and that, you know, uh, the, the law and, you know, it recognizes that we can't afford to keep saying not here forever. Um, and we've tried to look for a site that allows us to implement something that will minimize the impact to the overall community, um, but still deliver a meaningful benefit. And at the end of the day, you know, this, this development is about creating homes for people. Um, and, you know, for teachers starting out their career, for a retired couple who wants to downsize, you know, for local workers who want to live in the community they serve. Um, and, you know, uh, we hope that, you know, you'll give us the opportunity to, you know, fulfill some of those goals and, and be a part of your, your wonderful community. So thank you again for your time and your service and your thoughtful consideration. And I appreciate everybody sitting through this, uh, this hot evening. Um, and, uh, you know, look forward to, uh, discussing this more.
Thank you, Josh. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm going to say just so that we're continuing this.
I was going to make a motion of sending this to July 22nd.
Okay.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Any extensions? All right. So this, uh, public hearing will be continued to our scheduled meeting, uh, here, uh, on July 22nd.
And that'll be at 7:00 PM here in Room D at the Government Center, the municipal center? Thank you so much.
All right, uh, we will move. All right, I made a motion, five minute break. All in favor? Hi. Opposed? Extentions? May I otherwise kill it for five minutes, please?
Recording has started.
Uh, make motion to restart the public meeting. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, uh, we'll move right into our work session for TD and Sons Incorporated, eight thirty G Site Man, twenty units on 53 Taylor Avenue. I am refused. So Mike takes the wheel.
Okay, seven A TD and Sons. Guys, this year, we do have to have a consensus vote on which way we're going with this before tonight. So we're going to open up the sessions. Uh, oh, and let me see Jeff DeRosa for Paul Shanley for this. Um, like I said, we must come to a consensus tonight, uh, because then we have our next meeting to vote on whatever uh, we advise staff to write up as a report. For that reason, I guess we can start it down with Kenny.
Yeah, I don't like it. I wish it was less units.
We were had a condition of approval that says, yeah, you can do this project, but not 20 units, 16 units. Approve it for 16 minutes. That illegal committed?
Yes.
Interesting.
Uh, you can always confirm this with Jeremy. He's also online.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's something you can do, um, but it, it has to, again, it has to have a health, safety and welfare nexus to that decision. Um, the applicant is asking for 20 units in this case. And so if you approve it and say, well, we only approved 16, they can appeal that decision to court and see where the courts go with it.
Right. But if we said, okay, it's going to reduce or it's not eliminate the blasting, isn't that a health and safety concern? You know?
No. Because how, how, what substantial evidence has been submitted for the record that shows that the blasting would have uh, an adverse impacts in the form of public health, safety or welfare?
Speaking hypothetically, which is yours.
And we didn't have to have our own expert do that, right? We have to hire, which we have to hire.
Well, because
nothing that they're going to say is going to be
for, for an affordable housing application, and I would welcome any corrections from, from anyone on this, but for an affordable housing application, the burden of proof in lieu of a denial has to come from the commission. So, so if you're looking for a decision to be routed in either public health, safety or welfare, you have to buy the substantial evidence to say why those concerns are present. And, and, and that, and that testimony most often comes from an expert that can speak to that.
So we basically have to hire someone. In all these cases.
But it, it, it's not
I, I mean, I, I think we are allowed to hire somebody and then they have to pay for it. That's what I understood from going to that.
Oh, if the burden of proof is on us, we're responsible.
Yes.
Jeremy, I don't know.
The burden, the burden of proof is on you and you would have needed to ask to hire a third party consultant of some kind uh, during the public hearing process. At this point, the opportunity to do that is since closed. So right, right. So, you know, and again, uh, uh, David, I think hit the nail on the head. It is, it, it, you, you have to have substantial evidence, uh, that there is some kind of health, safety and welfare concern. And it has to be, um, presented to you by someone that has an expertise. Now, if you had someone on the commission that presented themselves as somebody with some sort of expertise during the public hearing, then you could certainly rely on their testimony. But again, the time has passed for that. So at this point, you need to deal with what you've got on the record.
I understand. And the same goes for getting your testimony from the public. If someone had testified as an expert in their field for something that was in the avenue of public health, safety or welfare, you would doubt that they would take their testimony into consideration.
Okay.
Jeff?
There, there was a letter from, uh, I believe it's the police department. I can pull it up that had, did have a concern about the amount of vehicles going around Taylor Ave on the ninety degree bend and then also pedestrian. Driving. And, you know, I had asked off the record to the applicant's engineer if there was any, um, they were going to improve the area anyway to, to accommodate pedestrians. They said that's not in their plan. That's not their, not the problem.
I, I agree with that too. I, I, I would love to have seen, as much as they say nobody walks town, people walk the town. It's not far to get to the brewery. And I know they're going to market this as oh, you walk to, walk to downtown.
Yeah.
So I don't know, is that unconditional approval that you have to put a sidewalk in front of the property?
All the way down the, all the way down Taylor.
So again, you cannot require offsite improvements. You could, you could require them to put a sidewalk on their frontage. But you can't, you can't require that it go beyond their frontage.
Yep. What if they weren't able, if we required them to put a sidewalk, they were unable to build one because of the constraints of the property? A compliant one, a compliant one.
So, uh, uh, on their, on their frontage itself?
Yeah.
That was possible.
Yeah. I mean, again, I, you know, I think you probably should have had that conversation during the, the public hearing. I don't know what benefit it would have since there'd be no sidewalk on either side of it to connect to.
Yeah, but that's the usual thing that, you know, we always random development out in Stony Hill 30 years ago, we had to put a sidewalk and now they're all being connected. So
Yes, a- and you're right, right? I mean, you've got to start somewhere. Yep. Um, you, I mean, you could add that as a, I think you could add that as a condition. It's, it's reasonable. They're going to be in there doing construction. Um, and, uh, and, and you can, you can add it. I, I, I don't know that they would appeal on that. Um, but, you know, like I said, it, it has, just has to be on their frontage. It can't be beyond.
I agree with that. What else? Um, why are you really having a go?
I, I'm still struggling with this. You can't make them build a sidewalk. I know you say that's just the law, that's just the regulations, but you're adding so many pedestrians to this area.
I think what we should have done is push harder to our public.
I remember I
We did, and he said he wasn't going to do it.
And I asked him to take the sewer route to the next three houses.
I mean, where are those people? Those people are going to walk down the middle of that road, ninety degree turn, some people come around the corner, run somebody over.
And they kept saying they were going to do something with that ninety degree turn.
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to chip away the rocks so you can see around the corner.
Right, but they never contacted the people who lived right by that rock.
Yeah.
So we don't even know how much rock is going to disappear. Don't know where the right of way line.
And the trucks having to go either around that curb downtown. And I know that we can't.
I believe there's a no through trucks. I believe there's no through trucks signage at either end of Taylor Ave.
Uh, you're talking about trucks.
Talking about construction trucks. So what happens? There's no trucks. We're not allowed to be there. If there's no truck allowed and
No, so, so, so the, so the signage for no through trucks, it addresses vehicles that are traversing the entire length of Taylor Ave and to get to a destination that is not on that street. So for a construction vehicle, their, their intent is to facilitate construction on a site, right? So, so they would not be considered a street truck.
Hey, Mike, is there enough small issues that pile up or not to make a part of doing a deep deal?
I'm going to the deal. Well, I think the sidewalk's a small one. They never really addressed it. We asked, I don't, I asked, I know you asked on the record.
My new central letter from the police department, concerned from the police department, and we addressed. And we asked and brought it up again. This is what I do with that.
But do, do you have evidence to show that you would have the majority of occupants from this property getting to downtown on foot?
Yeah, but the, the police, the police, yeah, the police department already said it was a concern there.
Right, right. But, but a concern is not, evidence is enough. But i- 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 it's, there's, there's a distinction between the two. So if, if you have something that said, yeah, we, 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 there's a reasonable expectation that people are going to walk to downtown instead of driving or biking or doing something else to get to downtown. Then, then you would be able to use that as, as part of whatever decision you choose to make. But, but, but all, but all you're, all you're working on at this point is just a concern.
From the police.
That, that's, that's right. That, that's, that's understood.
It's a, it's a small one. It's a catch. Was there a traffic study done? Yeah, they did. Yeah, they did. They did.
How, how far have to go to connect to the next sidewalk?
All the way down to Bannerville, right?
Yeah. I don't, I don't think Draper put it in down there. So I you have to go pretty far.
I didn't think you could put it on the left hand sidewalk.
No, it would have to be on the
On the right hand side.
Just a visibility reason.
No, there's that steep ledge rock there.
Okay. Jeff? Anything else?
Uh, I still really dislike projects with the density in that small neighborhood. Blasting, so I really do have a concern about the safety issues of driving and walking from there. Take a look today. I think.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, uh, on, on those fronts. I just don't know, as, as David said, if there's enough evidence that says it's a reason for denial. Um, which stinks. Um, what I do know is they've never really provided, you know, they just keep saying round numbers for radius of 250 feet and maybe 300 feet. I think if we did come to a consensus, I would put in a couple stipulations. Um, the pre-rast blast radius be set at 500 feet and include pre and post investigations of both foundations and wells.
Um, what I mentioned, Trump's trans thought, but what are you basing that number on?
500, the amount of, the amount of people, you know, they keep moving that goalpost. It says 250 feet and then they go, maybe it's 300 feet if someone's close or whatnot. 500 feet, I went on Google Earth and I drew a circle and it encompasses everybody that are around them, uh, around their property. Although I didn't know, I was doing it from a specific spot until somebody said it's from property line. So maybe
Steve told us it was not.
Saying it was from the blast site. And there's a lot of different blast sites and we've never gotten which, you know, where.
Where exactly the
Right, which we know the one is right behind the drake.
The blaster himself, when he said he was on this project.
Right.
Said in a hypothetical in another project that we discussed, said it was from property line, which changed.
Which is totally different than what Steve said.
So for that reason, they've also, also blown out, we should stipulate that it's from the property line. And we should say 300 feet because they told us, yeah, 300 feet.
Or whatever.
Or wherever. So I think we need to be clear on that. It's 300 feet from the property line. Doing wells.
So, but where, but where, where are we getting 300?
Because they said it. They, they were very vague on their 250 feet. We go back and listen. They said 250 feet, 300 feet, whatever it takes. So I'm taking that as unestablished.
And then I asked.
Uh, in the video. Yeah. So 300 feet and, and I'm going to say from property line because that's what I learned. So I'm just saying if we voted in.
Two weeks ago, I had a motion and asked everybody who was at the meeting two weeks ago, submit questions so that we could put them all together and use that as a basis for, here's the, here are the conditions for like, cool. Is that's represented?
Yeah.
Yes. We got an email on it.
Oh, for the record, I need much speeding.
Yeah. Um, the other thing I would also just I, I don't believe and I'd love for you to confirm, are crushers even allowed on site?
Sure, what you mean.
Residential rock crushers in a residential zone. I don't believe are allowed on site.
That's what I asked, but, but Jeremy
Allowed, allowed.
To be operated, like meaning all the rock that is removed needs to be processed off site.
Jeremy said in, in that answer to that.
Jeremy, do you know the answer to that? Are rock crushers allowed in a residential zone?
Typically they are when they're related to a construction project on a site. So that typically they'd be allowed for a, for a, uh, a short duration period. I think the question was asked about a noise ordinance and I, I answered that directly. And your noise ordinance speaks to rock crushers in relation to, uh, construction sites.
No, but they were talking about being able to use those to, to make rock walls. And then they were, and then they said that they would probably be having different amounts on the site and then truck it off when they needed it somewhere else at one of the meetings. So
Yeah.
You know, that's I would think that.
Well, I, I gave, I gave you a report with all the questions that we got, you know, at, at Spruels, uh, at, at Spruels directive of the last meeting. So there's, there should be a report that you have. And I don't know if you, I know you got it in the email. I don't know if it's printed in front of you there, but we, I printed out all of the questions that were asked and then all of the responses based on what was in the record. Um, but in terms of those crushers, there is an ordinance in, and I don't know that, I'd have to look it up, that, that there is an ordinance that you have uh, on the books that speaks to when they can be used on construction sites in those areas.
I had brought up that vibrates very far, like way in the beginning of the meetings, because I had that behind our property back in like nineteen ninety-two or wherever it was. Um, and it was my Um, and it was miles away and it still vibrated my house. So, you know, they said then that they might say that they wouldn't have a rock crusher on there.
Well, if they're not really sure, can we make a condition of approval that they can't use a rock crusher on site?
No.
Sure, you could make it a condition.
Thank you. It's a noise, it's a concern of the neighbors. It's, it's, that is louder than a blasting and it's continuous.
I, I, I think that's, I think that's a reasonable thing to request of them that they truck it offsite. Um, large rocks, they may not be able to, in which case they may have to come up with an alternative means to break those things up. Uh, but I think it's, I think it's an okay condition to, uh, to put in there.
My last thing, I know we have hours of operations um, that we're allowed to, to work on. And I know you alluded to that, Jeremy, in your, in your answering. Uh, just hearing the concerns of our neighbors in this area, I, I think any site blasting, site excavation and trucking related to those activities should be limited to nine to three P M. And my reasoning is that's the hours of school, the school buses, safety concern, school buses are now cleared. We're not dealing with any children coming or going at that time or when they're returning at three P M. Obviously, if they're onsite framing a house, they could braincast three P M. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying in relation to site blasting, excavation and the trucking of, of those activities.
Sadly, they can do it Saturday and Sunday.
Well, I was just gonna say. Monday through Friday, non-weekends and all.
What about summer?
Yeah. A hypothetical other project?
Yeah, on another project. Police Department suggesting that the police representation to help with traffic flow. I think we should have that here because they have refused for three months now to give us the staging of the trucks.
Well, yeah, I, I agree.
So now we have trucks coming in, waiting to get loaded while a truck is going out. Let's have them, that expenses on them. That should be part of the safety requirement.
How's everyone else feel about that? But those are my comments. Again, that's the way to do it if we come to these conferences.
I'm gonna go over them again, just real quick.
Yeah.
There's a lot of, a lot of things.
Well, one, you got to see different.
Well, that was me. I, well.
I'm all right.
You're a good Jeff. Well, I think straight out, I know Diane does herself, she wants to. Yeah, let's do that. Check out the page you want to. You know, I, I'll.
Yeah, it's fine. It's just, there's a lot of things in the town comments on letters that need to be included. You know, if they were gonna say this is okay, stick your punches.
We'll get that one up.
Doug, I'll just. Uh, I, I don't make sense to receive. I, I think the way to answer your question, Diane, is we have statements in our traffic conditions that we offer, say, you know, all comments in a letter from so-and-so dated so-and-so need to be sufficiently addressed with that. And, and, and so on and so forth. So I, I, I don't think you need to worry about finding particular comments that haven't been addressed. Just because I, the, the condition as, as it's written would cover everything that they have in the report.
But then make sure that they need those. That's found that we have in some, right? Where if they didn't, somebody didn't watch and make sure they met those requirements. I don't know, I just. And, and when you look at that summit that was done by Peter Olson, because he was the chairman or whatever, it is so detailed. I mean, we don't do that now. We're not doing so many details for requirements for jobs. I mean, right? And you looked at that.
I, right. I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak to the circumstances for a, a different application.
Right.
With that approval.
What I'm saying is now what we're doing is not anywhere as detailed as has been done in the past.
I'm not sure, I, I hear your question, but I'm not sure how. Sorry.
Okay, we're gonna, for instance, statement here, we're gonna go to the exact same pinch point in other projects. Because we don't have a process that says, as we go along, somebody's keeping questions that are unanswered, a record of them. So that we can then say, here's your condition of approval based on you addressing these concerns. We don't do that. Correct me if I'm wrong.
And we can't make them answer the questions. That's the problem.
Well, it's, it's, it's hard because we, we have our fellow citizens posing question after question after question after question, then we come along and then we have somebody who's trying to answer some questions. But inevitably, they miss questions they should be answered. We go through the next meeting and then we didn't answer this. And then we go to the next meeting. It's the same question that was once again not answered. Because we don't record it. We don't say, hey, Mr. Applicant or Ms. Applicant, here are the questions. We expect to see answers by the next meeting.
Yeah, we have to be better under the board.
As a board. It's just a simple process.
I, I agree.
But then, but, but then when we bring it up again, because they haven't answered it, and they don't answer it again, what recourse do we have? We don't have any recourse.
Just pushing, they're pushing the calendar. They know if they don't answer it, don't answer it. Boom, you're at a decision point.
And it's not.
And you try to take it, try to reject something and wind us in court over, wow, they didn't answer this question. The court's gonna be like, yeah, I'm kidding, that's why.
On a normal, on a normal application, you could probably get away with, with denying it because they didn't answer a question. But I think on H thirty G, you have to approve the, you know, the question needed to be answered or cause a, a safety concern.
There could be something, there has to be something that says, the applicant has refused to answer questions. We are not able to approve this.
If they were, if they were health and safety.
Go ahead, Jeremy. No, you know, my, my comment to that is, you know, I, I keep hearing, and I've heard this several times, that they didn't answer the questions, they didn't answer the questions. Um, we asked for your questions that you were concerned that were not answered. Uh, we got, I don't know, four, let's say fourteen of them or so, whatever it was that we responded to. We did a review of the record to provide you with the answers to those questions. So whatever questions you have tonight, you should have come to us two weeks ago so that we could do a review of the record. So I, I apologize. Uh, but, you know. No, no, I, I understand that's cruel, but, but, but at the same time, here we are again, clock is ticking down and we're saying that there's questions that are unanswered. But what are those questions? We didn't get those so that we could do a review of the record. It's possible that those questions were answered. So I think at this point, you need to compile some of those questions and if we can come up with a list of conditions, if it has to do with uh, truck traffic on the road, perhaps the condition is something along the lines of contact the police commission and, you know, work with the traffic authority to determine when and where police presence may be appropriate to handle additional truck traffic during construction. It might be something simple like that. Um, if it has to do with the rock crusher, it might be a condition that the rock crusher is not allowed on site and that rocks get trucked off to crush at an appropriate location. So I think at this point, that, you know, the questions that aren't answered, they either need to become conditions. And if there's any question as to whether or not they can become, if, if they can be conditions, then David and I are, are here to help you through that process.
Thanks, Jeremy. I, I mean, I agree in that, you know, that's one of the things I brought up. Trying to hear all the comments from the, from the neighbors. Be cognizant of what they're worried about, noise, safety, health. You know, I think crushers, you know, are probably more disruptive than the blasting and, and there's more mitigation controls with mats and dust prevention with blasting than crushers destruction rock. But I think that should be all clear just because the guy listens to our neighbors.
That crushes a big deal.
Yeah.
It is. It's loud. It's obtrusive. I think the, the time of construction, you know, safety on the roads, again, limited time we can do excavation blasting and trucking for those activities, the one, most of the kids will be in school. I, th- these are my opinions. I'm just rehashing them. If anyone else has any other concerns, they want to add as conditions. Do we have to have that now or do we have, can we send that into the email or, or?
You, you should have it now. I support those conditions, by the way.
Right.
I would also go, it was my turn. I'm gonna use my turn now. Um, I agree with Kenny. I don't like it, but I, I also, I, I like the other option less, right? You know, go wind it up in court over this.
So which, which were, they're spinning into the wind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, so I think, you know, conditions on the rock crusher, conditions on.
What is the cost of town to go to court?
That's one quarter.
I, I don't think, I don't think it's worth speculating on that price. I, I, the, the idea for affordable housing applications is to go through and make appeals processes.
So I support those conditions.
Three hundred feet from the property line?
Three hundred feet from the property line, yeah.
Hours of operation?
Hours of operation, no crack. And if we want to add up the police. Yeah, I see. I mean.
Sidewalks to nowhere eventually connected somewhere.
Sidewalks on their property. Agreed. They didn't ever respond or say anything to it. I think we should. So we have to the sidewalk.
Safety.
It is safe. Start somewhere.
It's reasonable, so.
Kind of condition.
And that nobody who lives there can walk to that. You can't safely get there.
You gotta start somewhere. You, you don't start, you don't start. Make them go further.
I know, but I can deny the project saying that it's creating a dangerous situation for pedestrians. So you have to have objective evidence. People will walk.
You can just say, oh, my, my, they're all gonna just drive.
And that, all that evidence needs to already be on the record. That can't be discovered.
No, no discovery.
You, you are, you are out of the phase of.
That's it. This is.
That is, that is.
Discussing what we have as evidence now.
Yeah, the, the, only, and I, I don't even wanna use the words new information, but, but the, but the only other information that, that you could receive is already, would have to be based on something you've already discussed that's on the record and it would have to come from a, 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 a member of town staff, either council, myself or Jeremy. Or, you know, a fire marshal or a director of public health or someone that works in a municipal capacity, please.
One of the experts.
Correct.
Bob, you, you, you've been quiet up there. What, any other additional comments?
No, I'm good. I, I, I think we, we, we beat this to death. I think we need to vote on it.
All right, so you need a consensus.
We, we need a consensus to.
Staff is asking for.
All right. All right, we'll do a consensus of, uh, of approval or, or disapproval. Kenny?
I approve with those conditions.
Jeff?
No.
Diane?
No.
Prove with conditions.
Prove with conditions.
Bob? Conditions.
I'm gonna say no, but that would be four, three. Right?
So if, if, are you asking for us to do an approval?
Approval with, yes, we're asking for a draft, uh, approval with the conditions that we say is here tonight.
And they will have that ready for the next meeting.
And some conditions that are engineered. Well, it's, it's, it's on these questions that you asked Jeremy that, and he said you can put this down or whatever. It's written in here in a couple places.
If, if, if the commission for some reason looks at the language that staff prepares uh, on the night of the twenty-second and, and you wanna make amendments to that, you, you are allowed to make amendments, but you would just have to state that they are.
Yeah, you have to have review that. We'll all review it.
You guys all have.
Yes, we all have it. So if we all work, we'll. Get everything we've just discussed here with our normal conditions of approval. And we'll go from there.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, sir. Good job.
Okay. You missed it?
Can we just, uh, clarify for the record who is still seated and who is?
Uh, well, Paul is back, so he, uh, Jeff is no longer seated.
Okay.
Unseen, just like that.
Um, we want to do Sam Lambert, nineteen Trowbridge Drive for Sykesman. Jeremy, have anything for us on this? David?
I am distributing a draft resolution approval that Jeremy prepared for you all.
Yeah, so with this one, we feel as though it's ready for action. Um, we've had back and forth with the town engineer, with the project engineer. Um, there are items, you know, that, that, that site overall is compliant. There are a few items there that I've noted as conditions of approval. Um, and I've, you know, let you review that briefly.
Oh, sorry. You can still read it. Okay. Say it isn't sounding.
I'm sorry. You guys, you're still here. My husband just texted me, goes, are you still there? I'm floating down the road. Do you want to hang on? Did it stop right?
Does Bob have a copy of this?
Do you have, get a copy of this today?
No, I don't.
Jeremy, is there?
I didn't email them.
I can email it to you right now, Bob.
Good.
Do, do you wanna put this up on the screen at all, Jeremy, or?
I, I could do that, sure.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, just give me a moment.
I'm sorry. It's a, it's a draft, it's public.
All right.
Anyone have any questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Before you guys have discussion on this, maybe we'll play to make sure Bob can make this to me.
Bob, can you read that?
It's a little bigger.
Let me see. I can probably zoom in. I think the main thing is the conditions of approval on the second page there.
Is this Microsoft Word, Jeremy?
I'm sorry.
Is this Microsoft Word you're using?
It is, yeah.
Right. May, may I suggest you go to symbol page and then make a page width and then scroll down the page?
Yeah, I can do that.
Star Wars. That's, that's. Thank you.
But if you make it at an angle, going off into the horizon. We're losing our minds here.
Is that better?
Not much.
Bob, Bob may not have the benefit of having as wide a screen as you do, Jeremy.
I know. That's, that's part of the issue that I'm having right now.
I think that's pretty good.
I can read out the conditions of approval that I propose here. Uh, the, the first one, the engineered drawings of the proposed retaining wall shall be submitted and approved by the Bethel Building Department prior to the issuance of any building permits. Number two, all site lighting is to be designed in accordance with section six point one of the Bethel zoning regulations and lighting plans shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning enforcement officer prior to the issuance of any building permits. Number three, an erosion and sedimentation control bond shall be submitted in accordance with section eight, ten, L of the Bethel, Bethel zoning regulations in an amount to be approved by town staff prior to the issuance of any building permits. Number four, as any signage proposed is to be reviewed and approved under a separate application in accordance with section six point three of the Bethel zoning regulations. Number five, any and all pertinent regulatory approvals, including but not limited to those from the Public Utilities Commission, Department of Public Works and Bethel Health Department, as required, must be obtained prior to the issuance of any building, uh, any building permits. And those are all in, um, uh, those are all there due to responses that we got from the project engineer along the way, such as, uh, we didn't have a lighting plan. We didn't have a signage plan. Um, and we did not have retaining wall drawings up at the time. So they're just standard conditions that would be required before building permits are issued anyway.
Okay.
I'm making motion to approve nineteen Trowbridge Drive site plan, uh, with conditions one through five.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The extensions?
Motion passes.
All right, uh, public input.
Side, side.
Does anyone mind? Have any public input tonight?
Can I speak on behalf of the lady? I was just to remind everybody what she asked. She wanted to know what the, uh, during the first application hearing, the four year moratorium on H thirty B, where we stand with that. We all kind of want to know that. Uh, and then she referenced, um, drainage issues not related to, uh, the previous application, but in general, with the town looking at something for reservoir or something by Saxon, I don't know. I don't know if anyone else thought the rest of that, but I just want to make sure on the record that, you know, we acknowledge that she had asked questions.
You want me to take a crack at this, Jeremy, or?
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to the moratorium one real briefly because I talked to Paul about this yesterday. Um, this is something, and it's in my staff report too, but it is something that we're actively working on. Uh, I've met with the town attorney, I think a week and a half ago now. We are working to fill in some gaps with the application materials. We need some additional documents and plans. Some of these projects are a little bit older and so the, the standards for submission or materials that were submitted at the time weren't quite up to what they are today. Um, there are affordable housing plans on some of the older projects that reference a, a, a third plan, so to speak, a site plan that shows which units are actually the affordable ones. And then that plan never got filed on the land record. So Amanda's been working diligently in the office to try and locate those older plans. Hopefully they're in files so that we have a backup documentation. That all having been said, um, I've been running the numbers and you need, you need a hundred and fifty nine uh, point six housing unit equivalent points, which is that H U E number that Jay referred to earlier tonight in his presentation, which is two percent of your seven thousand nine hundred and eighty housing units at the twenty twenty census. It looks to me like you have that number. I need to rerun these numbers. I'm gonna run them by the attorney, make sure that I'm calculating everything correctly, but based on, uh, based on the state's requirements and how those get calculated, it looks like you have the numbers. So if I'm, if I'm correct in that, it's just at this point a matter of filling in the backup documentation before we can submit. So we're getting close.
Jeremy, uh, thank you. Quick, quick questions, Paul, questions with that? Uh, any applications that have been submitted, obviously still need to be heard. What is the statute of, is, if, if we submit this application, we can still, we still need to accept applications?
Yeah.
Or?
But we can tell them.
Jeremy, any of the ones that are, um, approved but not built, are they in your calculation or?
Uh, they are not because I, I'm hitting a number that looks, that looks above and beyond what you need. Before I even add in the recent approvals, you have to have a C O in place for the housing unit equivalent points to actually count towards the moratorium. So I, I think, I don't, what I'm looking at right now, I don't think we even need to count the more recent approvals.
And how long's the approval process take from state?
Anybody's guess.
Okay.
I, I, I can't, I can't give you an honest answer to that, so I'm not even gonna try.
No, no.
That had said six months.
Last time we were, we submitted, we got a number of, uh, those who was disqualified because of
You did never, you never actually submitted an application. The application went to the town attorney and she, uh, kicked it back because of some, some items that were missing and the, and the points, uh, there was some miscalculating in some of the points. So it never actually got submitted up to the state. So that's what we're working on now is filling in those gaps to get that submitted.
And it has to be from two thousand on, right?
Correct, because this would be your first moratorium. Yep.
And just to make sure I understood, suppose we, we have the right number of units, we cannot deny, uh, say Nashville.
Correct. You, you will not be able to stop any of the projects until your moratorium is actually approved.
And correct me if I'm wrong, once the moratorium does come through, we just don't have to accept an H thirty G proposal.
Correct.
Someone still apply, we just don't have to accept it.
That's correct.
All right.
And.
We don't have to, we don't have to hear it and, and deny it. We just.
We just don't even hear it. It never gets off the ground.
I, I don't think you would run to that issue because developers are paying as close attention to that date as you guys are.
Yeah.
Um, anybody know, you know, they worked field has a moratorium on building. That's Kenny had brought that up a long time ago. And can we, I mean, we were inundated with so many things at this point. I mean, can we do that?
You, you cannot institute a moratorium on development altogether. You, you can, the statute allows you to institute moratoriums on specific items for a specific duration. So for example, when, when the state, um, created the cannabis uh, statute, you could have a, you know, you could have a, a moratorium on cannabis establishments for up to a year so that you could kind of figure out how you wanted to regulate those. If you wanted to put a moratorium on storage units because you were seeing so many of those being constructed, you could put that in place for six or eight months or up to a year, let's say, so that you could figure out your regulatory process, but you can't just have a blanket moratorium. There has to be a reason that you have that in place. And it's typically so that you can update your regulations and figure out how you want to handle something.
Which is what we're trying to do.
If we get it affordable, how long will that last?
Affordable moratorium is four years.
Jeremy, can we change our regulations so we don't allow blasting in the town?
Oh.
Does all these projects are on crap pieces of land that need to be blasted?
So that, that gets, potentially gets into an issue of takings when you're, when you're discussing uh, properties that may or may not need to be blasted in order to be constructed on. And, and so that's a difficult question to answer, I think. Um, I, I, and I don't, I don't quite know how to answer it right now. I, I mean, I'd want to talk to somebody that, that has a little bit of a legal mindset, but, but I would be concerned about, um, about potential takings in that case.
What do you mean potential takings?
Uh, when the government tells, when the government tells you, you can't use your land, that's, that's considered a taking. It's, it's a, uh, it's, you know, you, you've taken somebody's property without giving them, uh, compensation.
Um, real quick, uh, because we kind of just, uh, there was no public input and we moved right into the when did planners report commission comments, which is fine. Um, Jeremy, I want you to touch real quick on the T O D public hearing.
Yes.
First, if I'm wrong, what happened was it was brought to our attention, uh, by a letter by Peter Olson, a local attorney who's been here in front of this board plenty of times, um, that we didn't have the proper amount of time between us as a board deciding to schedule the public hearing and the public notices going out to Westcog. Uh, needed to be thirty days and also, uh, letting Danbury know because the border of T O D, uh, was within a certain, uh, area, um, a certain distance border in Danbury. Um, so we didn't have the time. So we're gonna have to push the T O D back, hearing back, uh, to the next meeting, which would be in August, uh, first, first week in August, August twelfth.
August twelfth.
Which, just so you, the board knows, uh, I was fighting against it and not want to push it back, uh, but uh, when it was explained to me that's a legal ramifications and, uh, I need this, I think everyone is on board that wants the T O D to be on the up and up. Uh, any discussion with it, uh, anything that we do with it, uh, there can be no gray area. Uh, so that's, uh, where we're at with that. Jeremy, did I misspeak at all?
No, that was a, that was a great summary. And, you know, I apologize to Paul yesterday when I was on the phone with him and I apologize to all of you. It was a, a matter of timing with your last meeting and scheduling of the T O D hearing. So the notice to Westcog went out twenty six days in advance of your hearing. Uh, and the, or twenty five days, I think, in the, in the, uh, the one to Danbury was twenty six days. I might have those reversed and, and that's not unusual. And typically the remedy to that is to open the hearing and leave it open. Um, I think in this case, because of the sensitivity of T O D, um, it was a land use lawyer who brought it up to us. Um, Chuck, your land use attorney suggested just delaying the opening um, to the twelfth and, and so we're not gonna go against his advice.
So. Um, with that being said, I make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, everyone.
Thank you all.
Handle the recording, I guess.